Can I have a round? That was C or C?
Yes.
Just. And they had the. Only one time. Really? I'm tracking. Let's do it.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente. I call this meeting to order, and Commissioner Camp will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Camp.
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove.
Here.
And Chair McCann.
Here.
There are no special order of businesses, so we'll move on to the minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of December 21st. Does anybody have any comments or like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous.
Well done.
Thank you. Oral and written communications. If there's anyone here and of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand now and let us know. Seeing none, thank you. Onto the consent calendar. No consent calendar. Public hearings. Condition eight A, conditional use permit twenty-two dash three sixty-five, pronto Italian market full alcohol, two twenty-one, Avenida Del Mar, Suite A. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do.
Good evening, Chair McCann and Planning Commissioners. John Champ, I'm the case planner for the pronto Italian market full alcohol request. The project site is located within the city's downtown at an address of two-two-one Avenida Del Mar, Suite A. It is located within the MU or mixed-use zoning district three and it within the central business district overlay. The existing use is retail and would continue to be that. Just to give you a little quick background on the business and the background of the suite, the Italian market, the pronto Italian market, has been in operation for the last year and has had the service of beer and wine for off-site consumption or sales for that matter, which is a type twenty license through ABC. And the suite has been previously occupied by a retail use, which was the P&amp;J Harlow Dreamware, which was a retail use. So it was a retail-to-retail change of occupancy. The request before you this evening is to change the alcohol sales from strictly beer and wine to full alcohol sales for off-site consumption. This would be from Monday through Sunday from ten AM to eight PM. This would allow the business to sell Italian specialty liqueurs as well as other alcohol beverages that are in line with their specialty Italian market operations here. So there's no proposed modifications to the interior or the exterior of the suite, so it would not be resulting in any intensification of use or additional parking. Project has been reviewed by all the necessary city departments as well as ABC, and they are in support of the application. Here we have just a quick look at the interior of the space. It's approximately eight hundred square feet, and here you can see the storefront as well. So it's a very small Italian market, specialty items as stated, and it will remain that as with the proposed conditionally use permit. So the alcohol sales will be reflective of the business hours for the off-site consumption, again from ten AM to eight PM. There would be no live entertainment or amplified music and is conditioned as such. In conclusion with that, the application is consistent with the general plan and applicable development standards, and staff is recommending that the project is exempt as well as approval subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution before you. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the business owner applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. This is a public hearing. I open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards, or would the applicant like to say something? Do you know?
Applicant's available for any questions you may have.
Would the applicant like to speak on this? She looks happy, big smile. Okay, no one else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion items? Seeing none, I'm open to a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that we determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section fifteen, three oh one, class one existing facilities, and we adopt resolution PC twenty-three oh oh two approving conditional use permit CUP twenty-two, three sixty-five, pronto Italian market full alcohol subject to attached conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimous. Congratulations. And now that I know about your place, I'm going to go visit it. So thank you. Next item, eight B, master project twenty-one dash three twenty-two, Calvada mixed-use development fourteen thirty, South El Camino Real. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. Thanks for your time. The item in front of you is a mixed-use development project on the south side of town off of El Camino Real. Calvada mixed-use is how our design review subcommittee has known this project. I did add just for quick reference, the project may be named Moana Landing or something alternate. That's the name that they are considering, so I've added that just as a quick reference so that we have that history moving forward. The second slide here shows a quick rendering of this proposal, and we'll come back to this, but just so that you have a visual picture in your head as we move forward through the description of the property and the proposed development. So this project entails a mixed use with ten apartment units that would be on the upper floor totaling sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-four square feet of interior space. One of those units would be restricted to an affordable rate. It also includes four ground-floor commercial units with second-floor office above. The total of that commercial square foot area is six thousand six hundred eighty-one square feet. There's twenty-four parking stalls and one garage that are designated for the apartment use and twenty-five corresponding parking stalls for the commercial use. The project site is seen here on this side. The top right indicates an aerial view of that site. You can see it's directly adjacent to the freeway off-ramp. That's the El Camino Real off-ramp that spills into Avenida Valencia if you continue through El Camino Real. This property with the yellow star is the one that we're talking about. It's just under half an acre. It's within our mixed-use three-point-two zone. It is also within a couple of our overlay areas, our architectural and affordable housing overlays. The coastal zone boundary bisects this property, so it's just at the border edge of our coastal zone. The property was a former mobile gas service station, but it's been vacant for thirty years. Remediation was completed though in two thousand and nine, so no further remediation is required at this site prior to development. The scope of what is in front of you and in the project plans requires a number of different entitlements. All four of those can be reviewed, of course, by the Planning Commission tonight at the same time. Those include a site plan permit, which is required for any development of non-residential structures, cultural heritage permit, which is required for that development within our architectural overlay, a conditional use permit that touches on three different topics here. One for a height encroachment related to architectural features, a second for beer and wine service, and a third for an outdoor dining area that could incorporate that beer and wine service. And finally, discretionary sign permit to allow for the creation of a master sign program, which is required whenever there are four or more signs on a building, and to allow for more than twenty-five total square feet of sign area within the architectural overlay. Again, here's that rendering. This is from the off-ramp perspective, so if you were exiting on the El Camino Real off-ramp, the left side of this visual would be Valencia, and then the right portion is would be continuing northbound on El Camino Real. And this is the rear or alley view rendering of the proposed development. And you can see one of the parking structures or parking entrances on the left, and the lower kind of basement-level alley access parking area is on the right side of this view. This project was reviewed by our design review subcommittee twice on June twenty-ninth and November ninth of two thousand and twenty-two, and the applicant made a number of design modifications through that process, including adding variation in the roof elements and wall planes, focusing on shifting some of the decorative elements such as that copper dome towards the left side of the project, which is closer to the off-ramp so that visitors to San Clemente would have that visual interest as they are waiting at that light. And it also removed a monument sign and modified a balcony at that same intersection perspective. The conceptual landscape plans have been approved by our contracted landscape reviewer, I won't spend too much time on these next two slides that are the analysis elements. This first one, development standards analysis, is goes into depth in your attachment three of the report. There's a lot more detail there, but touching on a couple of the key pieces, density at this site, twelve units would be allowed and ten are proposed. For our floor area ratio, one point five is the allowed FAR and one point two seven is proposed. For the height, thirty-three feet top of roof is allowed, and they are proposing that thirty-three-foot mark. The CUP is required for the cupola, which does encroach above that thirty-three-foot mark. Parking, fifteen is required for residential by density bonus standards, but twenty-four are provided. I'd note that they still provide more than what our code does require. And then twenty-two is required for the square footage that's referenced for office and commercial, and twenty-five spaces are provided. The sign program reviewed by design review does include tenant signs that are halo-illuminated and pin-mounted, and there are no longer any monument signs or freestanding signs on the site. General plan consistency, and I'm not going to read all of these elements, but attachment four goes into how this project would be compliant with our different policy goals within the general plan. A couple of the highlights here are that this project does accomplish our mixed-use goal, bringing more pedestrian activity and a mix of economic and housing opportunities to the site. It does accomplish the requirement within our coastal and our urban design elements requiring Spanish colonial architecture adjacent to gateways. A couple of other examples are urban design policy two-point-oh-six that looks to have parking areas disguised essentially and not highlighted from the primary right-of-way view so that the public isn't just seeing an island of parking. That's accomplished. All of the parking is tucked behind and within the garage areas. And then finally, the storefronts policy here in urban design policy five-point-two-two recommends consistent storeways or storefronts to promote pedestrian activity along our sidewalks, and this project would remove curb cuts and accomplish this goal. Affordable housing is referenced within the staff report as well, and as was noted in the introduction, there's one low-income unit, which when there's only ten units does qualify them at the ten percent affordable rate. And so this project then qualifies for increased density and an incentive or concession per the referenced government code. There is no increase in density proposed, but they are requesting one incentive or concession, and that is a modification to the alley transitional setback. In this zone, MU three-point-two, we look for buildings that are two stories on the El Camino Real front, but three as you transition to the alley, but we do want to have that height stepped down. The project plans show that this does still have a step-down, but the guardrail on the third floor does encroach into that transitional zone. So essentially, the waiver here would be allowing that acceptance of the guardrails on the third-floor balconies. With that, I think I've summarized the main components of this project and commuted the recommendations. Staff does recommend that the planning commission find the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to the class thirty-two infill exemption and adopt the resolution that's in front of you, resolution twenty-three dash zero zero one. And I did mention here, as modified by the recommended edits presented during the hearing. I do have a couple of edits, and that's going to be on this slide, so I will read these quickly, and then downline, certainly the commission can make modifications to these if they see fit and/or adopt them as written. The first is condition three-point-one-nine. This was a clerical error. You'll see that three-point-one-nine is a duplicate of three-point-one-eight in your resolution, so that wording should read. The applicant shall demonstrate to the satisfaction of the city engineer that approvals and/or permits have been granted from Caltrans for any encroachment permits related to construction, traffic control, and staging or work in the street right-of-way. We don't anticipate a significant need for Caltrans involvement in any way at this property, but given its location proximate to the off-ramp, this is a cautious condition. We also recommend adding condition four-point-one, four-point-two-zero that was a recommendation of the design review subcommittee, that the project plan shall incorporate internal guttering. Applicant has indicated that that's their intention, but I just wanted to be explicit about that. As well as condition four-point-two-one, that signs above the garage entry shall be pin-mounted or hand-painted. ACM panel signs will not be permitted. That's something that was recommended, again, through the design review process, but I see that the current plans still reference that ACM panel sign that I'd recommend that we move away from. And finally, condition seven-point-two-one, while this application does seek allowance for beer and wine service, there's not a tenant that's been identified for that corner suite that would be most conducive for a restaurant, and for that reason, it doesn't make sense for them to today build in a railing in front of that suite. However, a barrier is required by ABC if there is to be any kind of outdoor service of alcohol. And so I've just referenced here that the city planner and city engineer should approve any barrier prior to installation. A barrier of that sort wouldn't typically require a building permit, so this condition provides that requirement that the city has the opportunity to review prior to installation. So those are the conditions that I recommend that we modify from the resolution that are in front of you. With that, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Jonathan. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you show me on one of your diagrams where the encroachment is on the balconies, on the alley?
I can. If I could get the presentation to.
There's no encroachment on the alley on the first floor, right?
Correct.
So you still have a full alley?
Correct.
Because I know there's some of the building, it looks like it goes across the property line. Is that true?
So, and I, let's see. Give me one moment to... There we go. I'm going to make it full screen so we can take a look at this together. So this exhibit here shows that requirement, so the transition is that mid-tier point, and so there's a requirement that there's a thirteen-foot setback before you have any elements that are above twenty-five feet. So you can see that that guardrail that I've mentioned, it's often referred to as wedding kicking, right, when you tier a development back? And so that's the goal, but you can see that the guardrail encroaches, and so without that incentive or concession from density bonus, you would have maybe a Juliet balcony, but not really like a functional balcony space for the dwelling units.
Okay.
Can I interject real quick? And that third-floor balcony railing, it looks like it's a mix of solid and wrought iron?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the design review. On the dome, it's going to be nine, almost ten feet above the thirty-three-feet height limit. So was it moved to the freeway entrances so it would not block anything? Do you, it was better positioned there?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. I think the dome, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, about six-foot encroachment. Is that correct? And then the spire on it goes the additional height.
Correct. With the finial, it's just under ten feet.
Yeah.
When you include the combination.
So it's not the whole mass that's encroaching, and we did, it is pulled back from the corner, and we did review that and consider it at design review, and we're comfortable with it at that level, but you can certainly make comments if you choose.
And across the street, is it the dental office that would be there? And with their design, does it, because they're not built out yet, does it block anything with it being an extra six and a half feet? I know we haven't heard from them, but there's nothing in the package.
As you get down the ramp, that building does block. Just the fact that it's two-story.
Two stories.
But from up the ramp, when you first start coming down, it's below that level, so.
Jonathan, was the business owner that was going to be moving in across the street, were they made aware of this?
Yeah, so they would have been made aware through our center noticing process. They would have received the mailed notification within the three-hundred-foot property radius maps that we do always provide. I do think that that property, there would be some view impacts when they construct their property, which is going to be a two-story property. Keeping in mind, a portion of this is three-story, but from their perspective, it will only be two-story.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, yes, the short answer is yes, they were notified through the.
And their property is backed up against the freeway.
Correct.
So the two stories that they're building doesn't really, unless I'm driving by on the freeway, block my view, right?
Correct.
I'm comfortable with it being moved down to the other end, and I just wanted to make sure that the business owners in the area weren't affected, or at least had an opportunity to express their opinion.
I also wanted to ask Jonathan, there was a note in the file here about the concession and that the letter was submitted by the contractor to have, the applicant submitted a letter, attachment seven, explaining the concession is required to provide enough rental income to cover the cost of construction. That would include hard and soft costs. Is that common on a concession?
So concessions can be, there's a wide variety of concessions that applicants can request, and it can touch on any development standard. That could be setbacks, height limitations, et cetera, anything that could have an effect on their ability to develop because they are taking on some cost burden in providing the affordable unit. So in this case, the discussion was that providing the sufficient outdoor space was an important piece of them being able to market those dwelling units for rent, and without having, or without the concession, it does reduce their ability on the market rate units to charge a good market rate.
Is there any liability to the, maybe this is a mal question, if the market rate or if the concession is offered and they are not able to get the rent that they're looking for, is there anything after we approve or go through this, is there anything that they would come back to the city about at the concession? That would be on page eight.
If you could repeat that question, I couldn't, I couldn't hear a chunk of what you, what the question consisted of.
So on the concession, it says, required to provide enough rental income to cover the cost of the construction and hard and soft costs.
the cost of the construction and hard and soft costs. So any of those costs that they speak of were not involved in any way?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner McCacken, did you have any other questions? Commissioner Kemp, you look anxious.
Green. Jonathan, first from my memory, the parking for the commercial use is for, it shows retail on the plan. Does that allow for restaurant use in those spaces?
Yes, so restaurant use is planned as a possibility, and especially in that southeastern suite. And that's why they've provided that inset where there could be tables for outdoor dining there. The plans do indicate a grease trap, so they're planning for that in advance in case they are able to secure a restaurant tenant. But they aren't obligated to place a restaurant tenant in that space. It could be a commercial tenant. Commercial and office uses do have the same parking ratio in this area. So in the case of a restaurant tenant coming in, they have a surplus of spaces of three in that commercial designation, so they can apply any of the surplus towards the restaurant. Our parking ratio for restaurants, of course, is based off of seats. So then they would increase their seat count, applying those surplus spaces in that direction. They've also talked about, you know, there could be, for instance, the, right now, there's four suites that are shown. If they worked out a deal with the restaurant to occupy the two suites and combine that left side of the building, then of course, you know, they would occupy the commercial. They'd get to take both, or all the parking that was designated for those two commercial suites, as well as any surplus that existed before. And on top of that, our code does allow for eight free parking spaces outdoors. So they would still be limited in their seat count based off of the specific allocation of parking to that suite.
The master sign program, the typeface that we're looking at, is that approved? Is that part of it, or is it just the location and type of signs?
The typeface isn't something that was specified or deliberately required in any form or function. If there is a concern with the typeface, we certainly can, or the commission can provide that direction that they'd prefer an alternate from the typeface that's shown. That wasn't intended to be restrictive to that specific typeface.
Okay, so we could make a determination that, for instance, what's shown is appropriate or not?
Certainly you can.
Okay. So this is all lumped together?
Correct.
All the different approvals. One more question. The dome is copper, right?
Correct.
Is that going to be naturally patina, or is that going to have a pre-patina finish?
I would actually ask that the architect reply to that comment, if you don't mind, if we could pass that question to Hannibal.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hannibal, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the lectern, I think you're going to be better suited to respond to that question.
Good evening. First of all, thank you very much for having us here, and I want to thank Jonathan for more than a year and a half we've been working together, and also some of the commissioners, that they were really, really helpful, such as yourself, you know, to develop the design and modify from what we had. And so I'm here to answer any question. Yes, it would be a natural finish on the dome. Copper.
Okay, copper, but especially in this environment, that will patina over time, and you can control that. Is that what you intend, or are you just going to let it naturally patina?
Well, it is a patina. That's what we called on it. It is specified on our elevations and the roof plan.
Is it on your material legend?
Yes.
The actual color? Because it can have a kind of a greenish tint?
Yes.
Or if it's naturally patina, it's very...
It is a greenish tint, yeah.
Okay. So it'll be pre-patina?
Yes. It would be the patina, yeah. Green patina, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One I want to make, I talked with Tim Brown the other night, and he just was planning ahead to ask if there were any concerns that I had, and I indicated nothing of consequence. But first, anywhere in here, does it talk about the mortar on the roof tile? I was looking for, is it a condition of approval?
Yes, there is a condition of approval.
Okay, it is in there.
The mortar, yes.
And then the definition of this urban open space and how critical it is. We've got two spaces on Page A1 that are in the parking structure. Is that considered urban open space, or in the calculation, I think, on the landscape, they take credit for like 44 feet or something like that for each one? Is that necessary? And is that being... I understand why they're doing it, I just want to make sure we're not setting a precedent saying this is fine to do in all cases to get urban open space.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Could you assist me with the incorporated floor plans as backup slides?
Sheet A1.
And what does that sheet describe?
The lower, was that A1?
No. That's done.
Go to another level. There we go, right there.
Okay, thank you.
In the lower-left corner of the parking structure, and in the upper-right corner of the parking structure, you'll see Note 11. And when you go to the landscape plans, it calls it out as urban open space and taking credit for 44 square feet on each one, but they're enclosed in the structure.
Can, Hannibal, can you respond to that?
On the right side, we have an opening.
Yeah, one.
We have an opening that you would see the landscape, you know, from outside from the street. On this side, we do not have it, however, due to the structure, you know, of the walls. And I reviewed it with the structure engineer, and we can open it entire, you know, of front of the landscape. So that would be open to alley as well. And then, in fact, we will do that. We're going to modify it and have it as an open space.
Okay, so it was necessary for the, to comply with the square footage?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
It was.
So can you write up a condition for that, Jonathan?
And let's, I'm going to go to that slide now, and if I could get your assistance in making sure that I...
It might be easier going to the landscape plan, L1, which is only, I didn't get an L1 on my small packet. I only got it on the large packet.
Okay, so I have the landscape plan showing on the screen.
There you go. You can see it in the lower-left and the upper-right of the...
And so this location here, and this location here are what we're discussing?
Lower-left side, yeah. Lower-left side.
Lower-left and the upper-right.
Okay. My mouse doesn't show on the screen. Okay, and the language of the condition, Commissioner Crandall?
Well, my question is, what is the definition of urban open space? First.
Yes.
And then, we just want to make sure it complies with that definition.
So the intent of urban open space is, I think, best captured visually by our central courtyard area here. And so to your raised comment, those two areas are not the focus area of what our intent for urban open area is. That being said, our definition, and I would need to pull that up separately, because it is something that I...
And we have the discretion to say it's okay.
You have discretion.
Okay.
Yes. That's just...
Can I piggyback on that?
Please.
So those two zones are landscaped, that they're only visible really from inside the parking structure?
No, they're visible from, well, the upper-right side is visible from outside, from the street. The left one is, does not. So we're making an opening.
Yeah, but the other one's not, there's no openings at all.
On the, yeah, on the right side, there is an opening.
No, no, I'm talking about the lower-left.
Yeah, this one does not have openings, so we're going to make an opening on the wall. So you would see the landscape.
Okay, okay. Can I have another?
Sure. No, you're out of questions.
I can carry it away. So on the roof plan, I don't see, and it could just be a graphic thing, but I don't see, I think it's on A4, there are those two corner balconies that are facing El Comunal. I'm assuming those are supposed to, you're supposed to be seeing those, because you're putting the two corner balconies in, right? One on the residential?
One for the commercial.
And one for the commercial?
Right.
So I noticed that one of the comments I know we had was, we're concerned about the sort of open nature of that balcony on the, I guess it'd be the northeast. And it looks like you...
Yeah, we closed it.
You enclose that. Is that, what is that material? I couldn't figure out what that material was.
That is the Spanish tile.
It is?
Yeah.
Spanish tile on a vertical?
It is the stucco, Spanish tile over the stucco. The orange that you see over there, that's the Spanish tile, just like what we have throughout the project. In the back, in the residential area, you would have those Spanish tile, designed Spanish tile, you know, and this is what we have in here also.
So like a Salteo-type?
It's solid, yeah.
No, but it's not a barrel, it's not like a roof tile?
No, 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 no.
It's a flat clay tile?
Yeah, it is a flat, right.
Is it like a bright-colored decorative?
Yes, we have it on our fontaine also. You see the fontaine at the lower portion, there is a blue colors, and it's the same things, this tile, it's like a ceramic tile.
Okay.
Spanish ceramic.
Tile down below is blue.
Yeah, up, yeah, the, up there is...
And then that's going to be, what, a terracotta color, or what?
No, it is, it is a shiny, you know, it is Spanish ceramic tile, it's a designed Spanish ceramic tile.
I think you're talking about two different things. Where are you talking, sir, where are you talking about specifically that this bright-chin ceramic tile is going to go?
Right, right on the wall of the railing. Well, it's not a railing. We covered it, you know, before we had the railing over there, it was a concern that people, they would see it.
Jonathan, can you put the cursor on that?
You know what? The cursor doesn't work, but I can use my old-fashioned, sorry, I think the commissioners are talking about this area, and there's just a question of the material on this balcony, is that correct?
Right.
And I think the applicant is indicating that this is tile, the same way that this is tile, it's just showing a different pattern or different color, correct? But both would be flat wall tile decorative, Spanish wall tile.
Okay, as long as you're up there, that arched opening over there on that wall...
That's the same thing as a tile.
That's the same tile?
Right.
And it's just applique, it's just a surface?
Yes.
So there's no recess there or anything?
Right. Just to take away, you know, the mass of stucco.
Okay. And then below that element is the vertical lettering for the master sign, but that's of the center, that's the name of the center?
Name of the center, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Anything else, Commissioner?
All right now.
Go ahead.
Have we looked at parking, like overlapping, because although we say, you know, 24, 25 for each of these different uses, the same 24 and 25, right? So are any of those parking spaces going to be like saying just residential, so that the people who live there can get their spots? Because I mean, there is a conflict.
Yes, that's the intent. So the intent is for the residential parking to be gated, so there would be an access code to get into that space. They also...
Get into the bottom?
Correct.
The whole bottom?
Correct.
All 25 or 24 spaces?
Correct.
So how does somebody from the restaurant get in there?
So they would be accessing the other parking garage of the 24 spaces. So there's two separate entries. Let me go to the view of that slide.
Jonathan, just to clarify, there are 49 total spaces on this site?
Correct. Forty-nine total spaces.
I don't think they're sharing.
Yeah, there's 49 total.
Two levels.
Two levels of parking.
Correct.
With 24 on the bottom level, 25 on the top.
Oh, okay.
And they have separate entrances.
All right.
I have one quick question. While we have you at the microphone, could you, Jonathan, could you put that past the picture of the project up?
The rendering? Yes, I can.
So the very top, at the 33-foot level, it looks like it's a flat?
Pardon me?
It looks, it looks flat up there, next to the chimney, is, and there's two, looks like there's two landings, one on that side and one at the very end. Is either one of those, are they going to be used for open space for anything other than a roof?
On the roof?
Uh-huh.
No.
It's just a roof?
It's just a roof.
Okay. No umbrellas or...
No.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Go ahead.
So there is a flat roof area with a raised parapet, and that's to screen the mechanical units?
Correct.
Is there a condition that ensures that the mechanical equipment does not exceed the height of that parapet?
There's not an explicit condition. They would have to get a building permit to modify any rooftop equipment that comes in. So when their initial building permit is reviewed, that certainly would be taken into account, because you cannot exceed the height of the zone. So should the project be approved, when they submit their construction plans, that's something that I, on behalf of planning, would be looking at. Is there, are there any issues with equipment that's exceeding the height of the zone? We wouldn't approve that, they would have to find an alternate.
Yeah, but you said the zone, meaning 33 feet?
Thirty-three feet.
So I think, and we can talk about this, but we should consider the adjacent parapet that's there to screen the equipment. It should not exceed that height, which I think will work. I mean, that's, that's what you designed it for, right?
Correct, yes.
But I do think we should ensure that, because I've seen too many of these where the curb ends up being too high, and then the unit, they can't get the unit that they want, the one that goes in is taller.
That was the very first thing that we looked into it, and if you remember, in our meeting, I brought this up, you know, so we had it a little bit higher parapet, and that was my concern. By lowering that, so we talked to our mechanical engineer, and we're feel very comfortable, you know, with the units that is being selected, so they will be under the territory.
I do remember us talking about that, and, you know, I'm confident it's going to work out fine, but, you know, that's going to be critical, especially as you're coming down that ramp.
Yes.
So we just, we just want to make sure there's a condition, I think.
Good catch. Commissioner McCacken?
And I'll just jump in, Jonathan, and there is a code requirement that the mechanical parapet walls hide the equipment, so it'll be caught in two places.
Okay, good.
All right, Jonathan, this is, 30 years this property's been vacant, is that right?
That's accurate, yes.
It's a nasty eyesore, and I'm thrilled that it's, we're this far along in the process to getting a project like this approved. And DRSI, I know you guys do really good job before it even gets here, so thank you all for that. One thing, I have a question about, the affordable housing, are they required to provide affordable housing? And if so, what percentage of their space?
Sure, that's a good question. So a development in this area is not required to provide affordable housing. Obviously, that's something that's an option in any of our housing areas that can be provided. There's a cost burden to develop affordable housing. Costs you the same amount to build it, but you don't get the same amount of revenue back, and that's why the state has the state density bonus, to provide incentives like this, to allow for minor modifications that would make the project more feasible. The one requirement, code requirement, that we have on the city side is our inclusionary housing requirement, and that requires 4% of any units to be developed at the very low affordable... And that requires 4% of any units to be developed at the very low affordable housing rate. And, and so in this case, there's actually two things that are happening. There's the provision of one unit at the low affordable rate, but because they're not providing at the very low, they do still have to pay that in lieu fee. 4% only kicks in if you have 25 units, they don't have 25, so their option would be to provide, you know, 10% at the very low rate, or pay that inclusionary fee. So there's a condition tied to that, that requires that separate fee. That's the only thing that would apply to any housing anywhere. You always have to either provide that very low income unit, or provide the inclusionary fee. And when I say any housing anywhere, it's for multifamily developments. If you're providing, I believe it's six or more units, then that's when that kicks in. You're welcome.
Cameron, do you have any questions? Any more down here? I have a few. Is this the building that had the, at one time had a proposed patio on the corner, or was that the 1010 building?
That was the other one.
That was not this building.
Okay.
With the lights?
Yeah, exactly.
That are still up?
That was the other one, okay.
Yeah, that are still up. We thought we were going to ask them to take down.
Okay, thanks. We're requiring SCR architecture, right? And I don't want this to sound really not nice, but to me, the name Mawana sounds very Hawaiian, but yet we're requiring SCR architecture. Does it make sense to have a more Spanish-style name on the project than a Hawaiian name?
I think I would defer to Mal on that, I think that we might be in a space that we can't regulate. I, I don't know that we have the ability to regulate the name of a project, or, or the contents of the sign that relate to that name. If it was design-oriented, I think that we can certainly provide the, you know, like the color material requirements, but I, I'll defer to Mal though on the.
Okay, and I, and for the record, I kind of hate even asking the question, because to me, it's your building and you should get to name it whatever you want. But it might look funny, for example, if there were Chinese characters running down the side of it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a conversation that you can have with the applicant, but as far as dictating what the naming of the project is, what you've been, what you've been told is generally accurate. So, a conversation can be had. When, when it comes to the naming, we should be careful with, 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 with any dictation.
Okay. As a non-diction, but just as a thought, idea, my suggestion would be to consider a Spanish-style name that went with the architecture. I'll tell you, when we get to comment section, after we hear from the public, about how much I like the architecture, and how great I think the building is, but, okay. For my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Crandall brought up a great point about that open space requirement that's down in the garage, and to me, for all intents and purposes, it's pretty useless. And we're already making some exceptions, what would be your thought about maybe scratching that and adding more parking? Because it's not, it's not, it seems very useless to me for its intended purpose, but parking would be. And since we're already making some exceptions to various things, it would be one more exception, so I just throw that out there as a, as an idea. And maybe when, you know, I'm not asking for any answers now, but just an idea.
If I may?
Sure.
I don't know if you can bring the plan, you know. There was a reason, we looked into it to get more parking. In fact, we had more parking, but due to five feet between, and then three feet, you know, right next to the solid wall, so we reduced those. And then, reason that we don't have that parking over there is right next to the door. So if you want to back up, it is usually what we do, you know, we keep 20 feet away from any drive-in for any parking.
Okay.
Even if you have open parking, you know, there's a 20-feet strip of landscape before drive, you know, the drive-in into the facility. So that's one of the reason. If you want to do parking in there, maybe when we can do it, we're open to it.
Or even, or an alternate, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I still think people would probably rather have the parking than not, or maybe storage lockers of some kind, so people can. How steep is the slope? Do we know?
I don't think you can park it.
Okay. Well, maybe storage lockers. I'm just throwing out ideas, because, you know, Bart brought up a great point, that that seems relatively, what is it, what do they get credit for, open space or something? Urban open space, so they basically get parking lot open space. Anyway, just a thought, you guys can, if someone likes that idea, let me know, maybe in the comments section. Okay, that's it for my questions. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, we'd love to hear from members of the public that want to comment on it. Do we have any speaker cards? Okay. Is there anyone here that?
Chair?
Yes.
If the applicant would like to make a presentation, we would recommend that you give them an opportunity.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Does he have a 10-minute time limit?
Yes.
Okay, you have 10 minutes, sir.
Jonathan did the best thing, you know, to present the project, and we're thrilled, you know, to be on that corner in the city of San Clemente. What we tried to do in here was something, project, that would be, especially when we are right off the ramp, you know, from 305. So we tried to do something like flagpole when people are walking, you know, especially with the, well, before we did not have any seating, outside seating. And that was recommended, and it was well-recommended, you know, we took that recommendation. And we're looking really hard to get any restaurant tenant, maybe national tenant in there. We are talking to a few of them right now, which will come, you know, later, if that's been secured. So, the project, it gets complicated. I mean, you have architects on board in here, they know. It is really complicated with having a different 10 feet, you know, from the front to the back. And then also in the alley side, you know, we have about 30 inches difference in elevations, and it was not easy to come up with two level of the parking. Inside the parking, we have different slopes in order to get the projects, you know, comply with today's code. Well, of course, this going into our 2022 code, you know, we were hoping that for 2019, which is not going to happen. And so with all that, this is well-taught in terms of structure for the, for the building. We already have a structure designed, and we know what it takes, you know, to do it. Of course, if that would have happened last year, we were 30%, you know, ahead of the game. Right now, it's 30%, everything higher, you know, than what it is. So this project, we're really happy and we're looking forward to it when we can break the ground. We have one obstacles right now that it concerns us, and that is the coastal commission. We heard, you know, that we have to go through that coastal commission. We were hoping that city will take over, you know, then we can work with city on that to just expedite it, we don't know how long that's going to take. But other than that, the final design is really a combination of all the comments and the recommendation from staff, and really from the planning commission, you know. So we're, we're thankful for that, and they're looking forward to it, when we can start with it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Anybody, members of the public who wish to speak on this item, please step forward. You have three minutes, and when you get a chance, please fill out a speaker card.
Sorry, my name is Tim Brown, I'm actually assisting the applicant. A little bit on the procedures, just wanted to speak to a few things, had some very important ideas and things that came up here, appreciative of that. To really be on point, though, regarding the naming convention, I don't think the applicant, just based on a brief conversation, has not married any name. So I think if you would like to place as a line item or something, as a portion of, just a stated desire for us to evaluate a naming convention that matches San Clemente's history. Plenty of contacts on this, on the historical society, I'm sure we could find something that's appropriate. It might even fit well with that particular area of town, there's all sorts of unique historical attributes to that area there. There used to be, I believe there used to even be a tile shop down there and a ceramics, and there are all sorts of unique cool things around that area. So I'm fairly certain we could identify something that would be appropriate and kind of match the, you're right, match the, the style of the building with the naming convention. Second component regarding those parking spaces, you know, I love that idea because, you know, we, we end up with funny things in town. For example, one of my favorites is before my time, when I was on city, on city council, coastal commission approved that pathway down on ECR, right next to where it drops down, and there's a bridge, you notice that small little bridge there? It's because they found a small little emplacement, I think it was coastal sage, and they wanted to preserve it. So they built that transparent walkover it for, I think it cost $75,000, and promptly burned the crud out of the coastal sage, and I don't know if it's, I don't even think it's there anymore. But that was the brilliant, you know, that was part of the condition, so that's what they did, and that's what they built, and they paid $75,000 for that privilege. I love the idea of taking those spaces that may not add much value, I don't think anybody's going to look at that corner and be like, ah, what a wonderful open space, you know, thing we have here. Perhaps could be repurposed e-bikes, is a very popular use now in San Clemente, especially going down to trestles and all around town. Perhaps be dedicated e-bike parking with certain fixtures in there that would be appropriate for the residents to use, probably encourage less trips with automobiles. I think there's ways of repurposing that area in a sensitive way that isn't going to take away from the architecture, but will have more functional utility for the enjoyment of the property itself and for the surrounding community. So I think we're, I think the applicant is open to those types of ideas, if you simply stated to staff. The relationship's been very collaborative to date, and candidly, there's been a lot of really great outcomes just in conversations, even here tonight. So I think we just continue that same, that same repartee going forward, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else of the public like to speak? And again, if you can please, when you get a chance, fill out a speaker card and give it to the secretary.
Yes, hello, my name is Craig Curtner, I'm a longtime resident on Gaviota. And so my only concern is, in looking at the design, is the sidewalk on the Gaviota side is much wider than on the Valencia side. And the MRK hamburger bar is right across the street there on the other corner. It has a lot of business, there's a lot of cars on the street, up and down, parked on both sides. And when I see this design, I love the building, but when I see the design and I see the cars coming out, I just don't feel, from my experience with driving up and down the street and trying to access El Comino Real from the top when there's a lot of traffic, that the sidewalk should be this wide. If, if they could make the top of the street a little wider, I think it would be better for access and for cars to be able to pass each other as they're heading up to El Comino Real to, to exit. Just a thought. Because we have normal sidewalks down the rest of the street, but in that particular section, it's going to extend, I think, further than what would, would be accommodating for the traffic coming in and out of the parking lot. Thank you.
Can I, can you clarify? I don't really understand what he's, are you suggesting?
He's saying that the, the sidewalk current Gaviota is really wide, but that's how wide the property is.
So give sidewalk back to the street? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, I'm suggesting cutting the sidewalk down and allow the street to be a little wider at that upper part of the street.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, and again, if you can please fill out a blue speaker card that's in the back and give it to the secretary when you get a chance, just so we have your name for the record. Looks like you want to chime in?
I kind of concur, I live on Gaviota also for the last 30 years, and, you know, it is very narrow right there, and like you're saying, widen it would be better, only because we do have so much parking from MRK now, and it's hard to get in and out of there coming, like I come off the freeway and come around and come in. But that was kind of my question originally was, why did they decide that that's the only entrance to come into where the restaurants are, is on the Gaviota side, and not on the Valencia side where the freeway comes right off right there? Instead, I feel like it'll bog up the traffic as they're making that left turn, it's immediately a left turn, again, and onto Gaviota. And already it bogs up a freeway, you know, coming on and off right there, trying to get across to Gaviota. That's the only question I had, is why it's only on that one side.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry, what was your name for the record?
Tracy Grant.
Okay.
Yeah, I live on Gaviota also.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open commission discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. So, just based on those two comments from the public, so there's the entrance to the lower, let's see, the lower level, which is for the residents, is off the alley, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then the entrance for the commercial is off of Gaviota. Right? So the concern, I guess, is that sort of the more coming and going is, is going to be on the, on that side. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Also, as long as I've got the mic. I, I just want to commend Hannibal and the applicant, because we, we met twice formally, and then we also had reviewed some sketches in between that. And they made a great effort to, you know, continue to improve the design. And I think that, you know, that you guys did a nice job. Sorry you missed the deadline for the code change, but unfortunately, that's just the way it goes. I have a couple of comments on the sign, master sign program. We talked in designer view about trying to incorporate some sort of a project sign, project name sign in that fountain, or somehow tie it into the building. And what you're proposing, especially with that kind of a typeface, which is a kind of a cursive, not as easy to read, and especially in a vertical manner, I, I just don't think, for one thing, it's hard to even read on a vertical like that. And I don't think it really ties in like it could with the building. I know that's a minor thing, but because that's right there on the corner, I think it's an important element, I'd like to see more effort given to kind of incorporate the project name or the name of the project in the architecture. And I think you could do something great on that, on that tile feature. It's, you know, over on the center of the, of the building, the overall building, there's a, there's another place where you're showing that sign. I just, you know, I like, and we talked about the signage, I think everything about the signage, which you've incorporated, except for those two elements, to me, that typeface is not appropriate for this type of a, a project. And I don't, I don't know if, if that typeface, that's also the reverse channel, the halo, I assume, Jonathan? Or is it, is it all, because we've got this detail?
I don't believe that the project ID sign included illumination.
Okay. So this page five from Lauren Industries, why is that there if we're not? So this page five from Lauren Industries, why is that there if we're not?
I thought it was a halo illumination.
Yeah.
So all of the tenant ID signs do include the halo illumination. What they are indicating, and it's actually the following page, page six, the FCO stands for flat cutout. So it's the same style in that it would be kind of a pin mounted or like a cut aluminum, for instance, letter. But it was not indicating halo illuminated here. We certainly could require that as a condition as well, if we want the project ID to also be illuminated.
Okay. Well, my suggestion would be that we do have some sort of guidelines for that. I think it could be tastefully done, even as a painted on or mural type of a sign, but, you know, we're going, this is going to be our only chance to have any input on that particular sign, so I think we need to, we need to consider that.
That is a good question. Jonathan, do you have a? Okay.
It's a bit challenging to see, but what they're referring to is on the far left side of this diagram, you can see there's vertical lettering. So this is below the dome and to the left. I, oh, it also showed it there. Okay, let me find that. Okay, so in this version, it's in the shade to the left of the fountain, is that vertical sign?
Yeah, I didn't either. So Commissioner Kemp, as a follow-up to your comment, do you have a specific suggestion of what you'd, of what you'd recommend?
Well, I'm not, I don't want to design the sign. We don't even know what the name is, but I think that we. Well, the sign master plan, we don't have to approve that tonight, do we? I mean, could we have it as a?
Can I jump in, can I jump in on that?
Sure.
So we discussed this at the design review. I remember bringing it up. And what I was suggesting is eliminate that vertical sign, put it over the fountain as an arch, and you agreed to that. So I think it just got missed. That, that's kind of how I, that's why when I looked at it, I didn't see it there. It's so faint. I thought, oh, good, it's off. So that's what we kind of, you know, unless there's objections to that, that's what we discussed. And just put it over that fountain as a, you know, to follow the contour of the arch, and then it just looks like it fits and belongs. And, you know, we didn't talk about illumination of the hand painted, hand painted signs, so that's another, they look great, but then at night you can't see them. So what I do like about the halo, and I know there's a difference of opinion on that, is they look okay during the day, but they look great at night. So that's why I like it. So, you know, we could just be consistent throughout the whole project, and then maybe make the hand painted where it doesn't really, it's more, it doesn't really matter that much. Could be like directional things, but like the bike rack or something, but, yeah.
Yeah, let me.
Does that help?
Yeah, no, that does. Let me just respond. We, we did talk about that, and I think you guys agreed to it, and it sounds like you're, you're open to that anyway. I think the hand painted is a nice touch, especially with the Spanish colonial revival. And I think there's other ways to light that without having it look like the tenant signage. In other words, you could have lights in the fountain that could cast light on that sign on the, on the side there. You know, because I think there's a basin, right? And then even on the, on the front, that might be a little more challenging, but if you could do landscape floods that would, that would wash the face of the building and have a hand painted sign there too, I think that'd be beautiful.
I want to follow up on, on your question to staff. Is there any particular reason why if we wanted to pull the sign program out of, of the approval tonight and continue that? Like, is there any reason why it all needs to go together?
Typically, we, staff would like it to go together, only for ease of the applicant's time working through this process. However, it's not required that the discretionary sign permit be approved tonight. It could be continued to a date certain, if they, if the planning commission would like it to go back to the Design Review Subcommittee or some other action and come back to the Planning Commission for a subsequent approval. That, that would be fine. We would just condition your approval to remove references to the discretionary sign approval, sign permit in the resolution.
Or as an alternative, could we grant an approval with some guidance and flexibility to staff to work with the applicant to fine tune some of these details, like get the sign back over the fountain and some illumination on the hand painted signs?
To a degree. My concern for staff would be that the direction may, the direction may be too, either too subjective, or it may touch on things that are legally protected. I, I know when we talk about scripts and fonts and things of that nature, there's generally a carve out for national logos. And, and that's a consistent thing in most of our sign programs. So my preference would be on, on a sign program, provide direction, but it would be best if, if the final version of the sign program was approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Jonathan and Adam also. The package they have to submit to Coastal has to be complete, and they want to get that in as quickly as possible. Postponing the sign program, is that going to make an incomplete application to Coastal?
No, the Appendix B form that we use to relay the project plans to them does have a section that indicates what are the entitlements that were reviewed by the city. We would mark all of them if the commission approves the project as completed for the site plan, cultural architectural review, those elements, and then mark the, the sign program as in progress, and then forward that on. But it, they wouldn't, from my understanding, get an incomplete notice from Coastal.
But they need to submit that to Coastal also?
They do have to submit that to Coastal also.
So it's certainly more efficient if they do it all at once.
Correct.
I would just add that there are no freestanding signs on this project. If this project was approved by the Planning Commission and without the signs at this point, went forward, went through Coastal, got approval for the building, and then came back to Coastal at a later date with just the signs, I don't think it would be a Coastal development permit. It would most likely be a, a letter of exemption or a waiver. It's, it's, the, the, wall mounted signs are not the most concerning thing to the Coastal Commission.
Neither are sidewalks with a couple of little plants and a window over the top of it.
I got two things. One, I don't mind where that sign is, as far as when you get off the freeway, you, you'll be able to see the name of that building really well at that angle. If you put it over the, the fountain, it's, it's not as valuable, you know? And, and I, I like the idea of having it different than the tenants that are there, because then it, otherwise somebody's going to think they're going to go get some Hawaiian food. You know what I mean, right there? But they're obviously not. Secondly, did, did DRSC kind of look over the, the entrance where those stairs are? I assume that's to get to all the apartments there, right? When you get off the freeway, you're going to be staring at some blue stairs. Is that good? Is that the only place it could be? Can you, can you kind of tuck them away a little bit?
I could actually respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
That was a much sort of heavier, blockier element. And the exposed stairway with the mosaic tile or whatever is actually a nice architectural feature for Spanish colonial revival architecture. So we actually sort of pushed them in that.
I see where you, you, okay.
Yeah, we kind of pushed them in that direction. I think it breaks down the, the massing on that corner quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Doctor?
My idea on the name, I'd leave it up to the owner, because I, there's a lot of other businesses even that are on Del Mar that have, you know, either surf names or Hawaiian names because of the product that they sell. I'd leave it to them. Landscaping, I don't know. I'd hate, does the Coastal Commission look at landscaping, you know, urban open space?
They will look at the landscaping in particular. So the landscape plan is one element that we do have guidelines within our coastal land use plan that they have to provide. They are meeting our, our requirements. There's a breakdown of a certain percentage that have to be California natives within the planting plan.
In terms of the open space?
Less, less so on that element, but they would look at the Planning Commission, on that, they're going to defer more to the city, because that's a city specific.
I don't have really an idea on that, but to pick up one parking space or like e-bikes, I don't know that it's, you know, worth it. I'd leave that up to the owner. For the sidewalk, personally, I think even if you widened it, it's still not wide enough to get like a two lane. So, you know, that's up to the city and the owner, whether or not they, just as long as it doesn't infract, infringe upon their property line. And I think that's kind of it. Now this issue, I don't really mind the, the name or the, kind of the style of the printing, because it's sort of a hidden corner anyways. If you're coming from the other end of El Camino, you're going to miss it, because you'd have to look back to kind of get it. But the one concern that it brings up that nobody's mentioned is the number of the building is there. And is there a number at the other end of the building? Because most people aren't looking. I'm looking for the, you know, bank, I mean, the Hawaiian Gardens building or the whatever, whatever this building's called. They're looking for like, what's the address, or is it Chili's, or is it, you know, the name of the business? So that's kind of a hidden spot for the address to be. That why, well, because you don't see it coming the other direction. You'll see it coming from the freeway, but you won't see it if you come from the non freeway, because it's hidden in like a cul-de-sac. So if there's anything I had a concern about is you probably should have the address of the building somewhere out on the fascia that's not protected by a, you know, just for the recognition of the building for somebody who doesn't know where it is for the first time, if they're looking for address. And I can't see the other end of the building to see if they have, you know, the address from the people coming from the other direction, like the northwest. So that's my, that's my 25 cents. I really don't want to get too much into the, you know, tell them what they have to name it and.
I, I agree with you. The, the, the number really is going to be dictated, I think, by the fire department in terms of visibility.
That's not revisible.
No, I know, so.
These are conceptual doctrines, though, that's.
Yeah, I, I think the address is something we're not going to have much.
Okay.
Input on. As a matter of fact, the fire department might require them to put it above that arched element over there. So as you're coming off the, especially as you're coming off the freeway, you would see it immediately, but.
Right, but then you couldn't see it coming the other way. If the fire truck was coming the other way, you'd have to put it on that side of the building too. Otherwise you'd miss it.
They're the ones that are going to.
Okay. So I'm not really concerned about, if the fire department's going to determine that, I'm not really that concerned about either the name or how the sign looks, because most people coming the other way are going to miss it.
Okay, good comments. Commissioner Prescott Loffler?
I think it's a, a very nice building. I'm not a big fan of domes, but, but I can live with it. At some point, I'd sure like to see the architecture, consider local artists, maybe something that the tiles on Del Mar instead of the blue, but I, I can, I can live with that. I think they should have some creativity in their, in their building. It's, looks like it's safe. They're not going to be putting umbrellas on top of the roof. So, and there's plenty of parking, and there might even be spaces for e-bikes, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. Even the dome, if, if we have to.
Thank you. Barton?
Yeah. With your permission, can we ask the applicant's architect a question? When we were originally looking at the fountain and all, we had talked about having some graphic tiles made or whatever to enhance the appearance of the fountain, which is kind of what Commissioner Prescott's talking about, just to, and have you pursued that any further?
Yes. What we did in here, see, on that rendering, we changed the renderings four times. And then this is not, we're doing the detail on that fountain. So we're going to have a graphic type of tile work, which that would be presented, you know, for when we submit the plans to the planning department. The same thing as for the signs, well, if you go to the sign program, there is a name of the building, you know, on the arch, on the middle of entrance. We have it over there. The idea of, of vertical, if you remember the last time that we talked about it, we took this monument sign out, and then this wall was blank somehow. We said we do something in there, maybe we have some vertical name, you know, just paint it. And that's why it comes over there. So for the sign and the, the number of a building, it, it would be completely different, you know, it would be detailed in there. We do have four different renderings, Jonathan. I have another one coming from El Camino going on the other side. Yeah, right there. And right on top of where the balcony is, it can go another number, you know, for the building number.
Very good. Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. The other question, and I'll just stay there, Jonathan and Adam. We had another building like this that they chose to name the building, I think the number of the building.
Yeah, 1010.
1010. And the whole purpose was to direct the residents to the building and guests for the residents. So that, that would bring them around the back, and that's kind of what this sign does. It's going to be whatever name you choose. So I think that, that, we discussed that at length and thought it was appropriate in that case to get the people around. And then it would also be on the alley entrance to the residential parking.
Yeah, we do have sign over there also above the garage door.
And for the public and for our discussions, there's a five or six foot slope that Gaviota's higher than Valencia. And that's why the ramp is on that side to get into the second level of.
That's correct, yes.
So we're stuck there, and I feel the, the sidewalk issue and where the curb is, that's something engineering and, because that's a city issue, not the developers here at, at this point in time. But I can, we spent a lot of time on it in Design Review, and I've watched how this team works, and they will probably continue to improve the building as they get into the finite details of completing working drawings and whatnot. And I think that's great, so I can make the findings for this project and am in support of it. You know, like anything we review, they aren't always perfect, but we get as close as we can, so I compliment the project team and so forth. And if you come across things that you think are an improvement, don't shy away, because you don't want to rock the boat with planning. Go ahead and, when you see those things, I'm, I'm comfortable with Jonathan in most cases reviewing, reviewing those and saying, yes, that's an improvement rather than a degradation, so. I'm good with it. And I'm fine with the, the sign program. And that can even evolve, particularly once you start getting tenants.
Correct.
Yes, we have, because, what's the process for doing an amendment to a master sign program? sign program?
So any amendments go through the same amendment process as any entitlement. That actually goes to our city planner or community assistant, community development director, or deputy, sorry, community development director. And there's three, three potential paths for that. And that would be if it's a significant modification with public impact, like Adam perceives that the public would not be happy with the change, then it needs to go back to the original hearing bodies, would come back to planning commission. If it's a substantive change that the public likely wouldn't have concerns with, then it would go to the zoning administrator. And if it's a minor modification, then Adam can make that determination.
Can you say something? Chris Kozlowski?
I'm ready. I'm just looking to make a motion.
Before you do?
Okay.
I'd like to share my comments and do you guys have any additional?
The only other thing I wanted to just remind us about the parapet height?
Yeah.
Did we make sure there's a condition?
I have that on.
Okay, that's all.
Well, and also the, the conditions of approval modified by staff. Okay. I have a few comments. I think this building is absolutely extraordinary. I think that, I know that the staff and, and design review subcommittee, you know, worked on it a bunch, but the architect and the owner were willing to make the changes and work with staff. And I think the finished design product is absolutely fantastic. It looks, it's a 10 plus. So I want to congratulate you on that and thank you for working with the city on that. Relative to the name, not dictating anything, my personal opinion is to give it some more thought and, and have it best appropriate, whether it's historic or locally historic or Spanish sounding or whatever. That's my, just a suggestion to consider. I'm really interested actually in your comment about protecting the dome like a pre-patina. Would that, if you, if you did a pre-patina, is it, does it preserve the coppery color or does it go to a, just a different color of green?
Hannibal could probably address this, but you don't really have control over the color if you allow it to patina naturally. As a matter of fact, a lot of times it comes off as a kind of a brown as opposed to the green, which I think is what is more appropriate.
And it can stain the building?
Yeah, it can stain the building.
If you leave it natural?
So what they, what they do is they pre-patina it with chemical typically. I mean, there's other ways to do it. And then they, they can put a sealer on it to keep it from staining the building. Because with the white plaster, even though there is a, it looks like there's a flat area around it ultimately.
And they have to seal it, you know, every three, four years.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, thank you. I believe that, that there's potentially better uses of the space for those little landscape pockets in the parking that I think could be left up to the applicant and staff to, to work out. That'd be my suggestion, but it's whatever the commission's desire is on that. But I personally think that the value of those landscape pockets is really de minimis and there's better uses for that. So with that, I'm open to a...
We don't need to put that in a motion now, do we? That's just up to them, right?
No, I think it's, I think it's, we need to be in a motion.
Is there a percentage that we have latitude to eliminate?
I unfortunately don't have that calculation in front of me. It would take me a moment to go back to the plans to, to look at that calculation.
But pull them out of compliance.
So my, my thought on that would be one element or one approach that the commission could take is, given that this project does qualify for the, the density bonus, you are obligated to give one incentive or concession, but you're not limited to that one incentive or concession. And please maljump in if I'm out of place, but I think that that could be one avenue to cleanly say that you feel that a project of this sort and considering the affordable nature of, or affordable unit that's included, that that modification is appropriate in bringing in the, the best project possible.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to get us started.
I just think the, the e-bike parking or something would be phenomenal down there in the garage like that. Not that it's required, but just a little comment there. I mean, somebody brought up that e-bikes are everywhere and it's, it's just important to our, it's, it's, it's happening. So I think e-bike parking instead of maybe those planters would be amazing.
So my comments are, having worked on this through design review, was that the applicant has been very responsive to wanting to meet the, what the city's looking for. So I think we can all feel comfortable that the comments are going to be acted on, not just listened to. They've shown that. And to the dome, we had a lot of conversations about that. I in particular talked, talked with you about that. And I think we found a meeting of the minds where you made an adjustment where I think you turned it into a feature instead of something that was just chew-horned in. And I think it does comply with SCR architecture and it does make it more interesting. And you're going to have some challenges getting it installed and maintained. And I think that just speaks to the intent of the owner to try and make this a nice building for the city. So I think you should be, you know, shown appreciation for that. So with that, I'm going to, I think we can make all the findings on the cultural heritage permit as well as the conditional use permit and discretionary sign permit. And I would then move as follows, that the staff recommendations, one, that we, we have determined that this project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the SEQA. And two, we adopt PC Resolution 23001 approving master plan 21-322 for the Calvada mixed-use project at 1430 South El Camino Real, which includes a site permit and 21-323, the cultural heritage permit, CHP 21-324, the CUP 22412, and a discretionary sign program 21326, subject to the attached conditions of approval with the following amendments to those conditions of approval. One, we include the four new conditions as proposed during the presentation by Mr. Lightfoot, 3.19, 4.20, 4.21, and 7.21. We also will add a new condition that the applicant is granted a additional concession with respect to the urban open space requirement, with the intention of giving the applicant flexibility of, you know, redesigning the interior garden area. Does that work? You understand what we're talking about?
Yes. Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yes.
If I could, could we clarify that condition to relate to the, the upper park and garage level?
Yes. So the, so it would be, the applicant is provided an additional concession for providing the affordable unit to have an exemption on the, on the urban open space specifically on, was it the first level?
Upper level parking.
Upper level corner landscaping to provide an area that is best highest use of that space.
There's two spaces, both, both spaces?
Yes, both spaces.
Okay.
Does that meet everybody's? Yeah. And I think they heard you on the bikes and all that. I don't think we need to include anything about the naming. I think they've heard it and they'll do what they think is right. And I don't think we need to bring the sign program back. Of course, if you want our advice, design review, you can talk to Adam and he'll get us, get you in there. We're happy to talk to you if you want it. Talk to us. That's up to you.
We'll be more than happy to talk to them.
That's up to you.
Yes, we will.
I believe that would be everything.
Perfect.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Another condition which be, would be that we, the city requires all mechanical units be positioned and not exceed, be positioned to not exceed the height of the parapet wall on the roof.
The parapet wall intended to screen.
To screen, yeah, the equipment on the roof. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Does that include everybody's concerns?
And guard rail maybe? Guard rail? The setback for the guard rail, was that a concession?
That's already included.
That's included.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Unanimous.
Only take you 18 months.
If it's okay, I would like to take a three-minute break. Is that good?
Chair, could we make that a five-minute break? We just want to set up for the next item.
How about a five and a half minute break?
Deal.
Deal.
Welcome back to the Planning Commission. You see, the public is thriving with interest on this next item. Item 8C on the agenda, zoning amendment twenty-two dash three sixty-six, zoning permit streamlining. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Wright will lead us through this discussion.
Good evening, Planning Chair, members of the commission. This item, known as zoning permit streamlining that I'll be presenting, it started out by the council asking for a report on ideas to streamline our zoning permit process for different types of projects. And then in June, the council had directed staff to speak with the Planning Commission, and it came to this commission, of which we reviewed some ideas with the group and got some feedback. And then it went back to City Council, and then the council did initiate this project with those list ideas and gave direction to pursue them. So that's how we started this project. I'll give you like a very high-level view of it, and then we can I'll give you some suggestions on how to get through these two-hundred pages this evening as simply as we can. But to start it out, really, the this project would reduce the level of review for a number of types of projects in the city. In some cases, it would be reducing a public hearing-type process from maybe a planning commissioner view to zoning administrator review, or a zoning administrator review to an administrative type of process, depending upon the level of public concern that's anticipated for that type of project. So the type of impacts, the type of public concern that could be expected based upon our prior experience with them. And so careful was careful thought was put into what types of projects should be eligible for those types of streamlining, and that was also based upon what the council told us to do. So the next thing is, specific to the administrative review, we currently have a staff review, staff waiver-type process for projects that could go through a staff level of design review. And this set of zoning amendments would expand upon the types of projects staff could approve, but it also builds in more specificity. So there's a catch-all category right now where it just says changes that are not going to significantly alter the visual appearance or architectural integrity of a building is something that is eligible for staff review. That's a pretty broad category. The types of changes would narrow that down to have more specificity of what staff can do and define guidelines that would have to be followed in order for staff to approve those things. So both general guidelines and specific guidelines. Something that's not in your report is staff did take time to reach out to the City of Santa Barbara, considering there's a lot of similarities with our architectural and history with historic buildings. And we looked and consulted with their staff to figure out what they do on administrator reviews and borrowed a lot of their ideas and made them our own as well. So that's how we came to draft that part of the amendments that you have. To make sure that those type of decisions would be transparent, we would continue to put a list of any decisions that we make in your packet, like we do now, but instead of it being a staff waiver, it would be a different type of name. But also, we would be giving those decisions to the City Council. The effort there is, so instead of to make sure that the appeal process is efficient, so it doesn't something doesn't go to the Planning Commission and then it taking a whole other meeting to go to the City Council, there would be the standard appeal period for these type of reviews, and it would be transparent. So that's something that was kept in mind. There's some other things, like consolidating applications and clarifying procedures, but that those are like the big-ticket items, and we could get into more detail as we discuss the changes. I am going to give you some examples. The Planning Commission previously asked for some of those. We had focused on giving examples of things that just need to be a little bit more visual, and we will show you those. The next is an approach for discussing these items. I'll give you my ideas on that, and then a conclusion. So for the streamlining examples, the first one is going to be a non-residential accessory building. Currently, if you have an accessory building of any kind, any new building where it's on a historic site, it's a non-residential site, it's a planning commissioner view. And this is an example here. It might not look like it, but it is a commercial use. It's a swim school in this building. There is a detached garage in the back. That is an accessory building. So what is being suggested here is that a non-residential building, you could do an addition in our code of less than two thousand square feet, and that goes to the zoning administrator. But if it's a separate building, then that has to go to the Planning Commission. And staff doesn't really understand that, because it's the same amount of square footage, whether it's detached from the main building or it's attached to the building. It's still the same amount of square footage. So staff is, in this case, suggesting that it be a zoning administrator decision. Just please let me go through these, then we can come back to them. The next one is a residential accessory building height. Currently, if you have a detached building in a residential zone, the height limit is fifteen feet. The height limit of the house is twenty-five feet. So if you build a little passageway to connect the detached building to the house, now the detached building can be twenty-five feet, and that's what some people do. They try to get around the rules, and they build a little hallway to connect the two buildings, which is really silly. Also, really, you're disincentivizing for people to do something the city wants. City wants to break up buildings. They don't want a massive building. So by having a smaller height limit, it pushes people to want to do that, to put those hallways in. What staff is suggesting is that the height limit be the same as the house, the height limit of the zone, provided that the building meets the same setbacks as the house. Because if you attach that building to the house, it can be twenty-five feet. If it's five feet away, fifteen feet, but it still meets the setbacks. This is a detached building in the backyard here of this house. It meets all the setbacks. They had to go through a public hearing process to make it that high. But if they attached the building, they would not have to go through a public hearing process. The next example is a suggestion of staff that right now, if you have a residential site within three hundred feet of a historic building, so in this case, the yellow arrow, and you have a property that was with the black arrow, it's within a three-hundred-foot area, all the brown properties, that would require a culture heritage permit to do a new development there of three or four units. Staff is suggesting that if a that site were a hundred and more than a hundred and twenty feet away and two parcels, staff could approve it. And the idea behind there is you're talking about at least two par up properties worth of distance, in some cases, the street also, where a project would have to be separated from the historic building. In staff's opinion, that's a good amount of distance to avoid any massing impacts. Yeah.
How would the Historic Society have an opportunity to voice in on that?
All the decisions that we would make would be going into your packet, and they would be able to look at those decisions, and if they
You're saying you're going to do it at staff?
Yes, the decisions would go in the Planning Commission packet. We could also, if we're directed to, we could the pub there's an appeal process. That's my point. So if there's desire, we could be given direction to publish the decisions on the internet. People want to look at it there. But that's, there's options.
Is that for cultural heritage?
It would be, yeah, I can explain the types of permits. Those would be changing under the proposed the culture heritage permit would be different under the ordinance.
Okay, let me ask you a different question. How would this Historical Society know about Do they get notified on any project near a historic property?
They get notified if it goes to a public hearing.
You're proposing that it wouldn't go to a public hearing, or is the ZIA a public hearing?
This would not go to a public hearing. This would be a staff-level approval. Be a staff-level.
Exactly, that's DeBart's point, which is they're not going to know. Could we add a condition that that a notice gets sent to the Historic Society?
Sure, if we, I mean, as a policy, the City Council could even make a policy that staff distributes these types of decisions to the Historic Society. We can do that.
When you say distribute the decision, that's kind of after the fact.
Well, but there's an appeal period, like everybody else. There's an appeal period. No, there is a fee, but the City Council can call up an item. So that's one of the reasons why we're going to be forwarding the decisions to the City Council and the Planning Commission at the same time.
My concern is that this community is built on history, and when you remove the public from that, then you have an opportunity to actually remove the history. And so I would not be in favor of something being removed that I believe is very, very important to include the other ADU that would be, even though we don't have a whole lot of purview on that, I still think because we are a small community and we have condensed spaces that the public needs to be, needs to have an opportunity to weigh in. That's my biggest concern. I can see why it would benefit the contractor, and I do, I do want to be able to, you know, for those people to be able to get their project done quicker, but at the same time, I don't want to usurp the public from that process. And we are one of the first steps for the public.
Can you clarify how it's different? You said, I thought you said a hundred and twenty, but that says a hundred and fifty. And currently, it's three.
Yeah, more than, more than a hundred and twenty feet away. That between a hundred and twenty feet and three hundred feet, currently, it would require a planning commission review, and now it would be a staff-level review. So at least two parcels away and more than a hundred and twenty feet up to three hundred.
Okay, and what about the, is the three to four unit, is that just an example, or is that part of the criteria?
That's the specific situation that this would apply.
Okay, that you're using as an example.
No, so if you were to do a project of three or four units, so let me tell you how the process works now first. So if you build three up to, three or more, three or more units, three or four units on a parcel within three hundred feet of a residentially-zoned building, it requires a planning commission approval of a culture heritage permit.
If that resident, if it's a historic residential building?
Historic residence. Staff is recommending that if the the site is more than a hundred and twenty feet up to three hundred feet, and it's at least two parcels away, in the case of it being an adjoining property, then it would be a staff-level review.
And one other, just one other note, if I could just clarify a couple things. So we'll get into more detail as we go through the documents here related to the administrative approvals. But one of the things that we're trying to clarify is that the administrative approvals are they're specific to things that are not generally of major public concern. So right now, somebody could do a relatively large project on a three, on a triplex that's within three hundred feet of a historic property without there being any notification to the Historical Society or any neighboring properties, because it would currently fall under the staff waiver guidelines. We're not, we're not making major changes to the general the general scale of projects that we're looking to streamline. What we're trying to do is create better definitions of what could be approved by staff. And generally speaking, those recommendations are made on from staff's experience, working on a lot of these types of projects where you know, they're not very visible, or they're totally screened, or they're not even visible if you're standing in front of the historic property. And so Chris will go into some of that detail. The thing with the three to four units, all residential buildings of five units or more require a conditional use permit, and so they're always going to have, regardless of where they're located, they're always going to have some discretionary review.
When you get to the height limit, though, that's my concern, is you made it sound very simple that, oh, well, they could just build a hallway, and it would go up to the twenty-five feet. And right now, it's at fifteen feet, I believe.
Yeah, well, you know, let's, can you go back to that slide real quick? This is, this is what we're, this is a we had discussion about this previously. All we're saying is that that building in the back, the two-story building in the back, as it's constructed now, it required a planning commission approval. If they built a hallway between that building and the main house, all they would need is a building permit. So people who want to do that are likely to just build a hallway to get around the discretionary permit requirement for a detached building. And we just, as staff, we don't really see the benefit. The other thing that could happen is they could just tear down that built, the main structure, and build a massive house that encompasses the entirety of the detached structure in this picture. Again, in this, in this particular instance, wouldn't require a discretionary permit at all. It would just be a building permit. So we're looking for some of these opportunities to streamline things when there are other ways in the code to get around the discretionary permit process anyways.
I'll also add that that the current height limit disincentivizes for people to break up buildings, which is inconsistent with the city design guidelines. City design guidelines promotes breaking up buildings. So by making and creating an incentive for people to attach buildings to have the same height limit, even if they're meeting all the setbacks, it's an incentive to have a bigger building.
I got a couple things. One, just to start off, I want to understand why this is even happening. Is it to save time? Because I just, the seven of us up here, I see so much value into bringing something in front of us. So is the benefit to save time or money, or what's the driver?
The driver of this, you're talking about the project in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, the driver of this project is the City Council.
For what, though?
For permit streamlining. They specifically wanted to remove obstacles to the city's ability to issue permits.
Okay, I understand. Secondly, Secondly, I believe each one of these things you're talking about, each item, needs to be hammered out individually. Because like, like this thing, I could talk for a long time on what you go. There's a lot of hypotheticals. Or they could dunk the whole thing down, build a bigger house. But when you take away that fifteen-foot restriction, you just take it to twenty-five foot and there's no breezeway or hallway or whatever. But people don't know that we really want fifteen feet, but when you open it up, it's straight up twenty-five feet. You know what I mean? So you're, you're not saying, hey, we really like the elevation change. You're telling an architect, e- every one you do now could be twenty-five foot. And he's like, yep, twenty-five foot, that's what we're doing. But I could hammer out every one of these slides, like with a pro and con on it.
Yeah, I-
Looking at this lot, if somebody came in and said, I wanna build an A D U, how high can it be?
Uh, by right would be sixteen feet, uh, depending on a couple circumstances. Um, uh, if they wanted to go higher than that, for the A D U, they would require a discretionary permit.
Because we had some come in that were gonna be over the top of a garage. So it went higher, just basically, that falls under the A D U. And they could reduce their side yard setbacks then, if I'm not-
Yeah.
We've got the man who knows here.
Yeah, under A D U law, uh, yeah, for detached A D U, it's four-foot side and, side and rear.
In this case, you would have to, in order to qualify for this height limit, you would have to meet the setbacks of the zone. So you would not be doing the four-foot A D U setbacks.
Unless you go the four-foot on the garage and step back a foot to the unit.
No, you would have, if the setback of this zone is ten percent of the average lot width of six feet, let's say it's a sixty-foot wide lot, the setback would be six feet on the side and ten feet in the rear to build a building like you see in this picture in the back.
If some, if a, if an applicant came in and they qualified for ministerial approval, then the A D U rules would apply. But it would have to, it would have to be an A D U and have complete independent living facilities and, and check all the boxes as an A D U.
Mm-hmm.
If it was just a detached garage or something that, that wasn't, didn't have complete full independent living facilities and didn't qualify as an A D U, then you'd be outside of ministerial A D U land and under the city's traditional zoning code.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna make it clear is, um, as Ryan just said, it depends on how it comes to us. So if it's a garage with a office above it, then it's meeting all our zoning rules, twenty-five foot high limit, ten-foot rear setback, six, whatever the side setback of the zone is. That's what would be, have to be in place. If they come to us with an A D U, then they would have to follow the A D U rules, which is a more strict height limit. So, it would be-
Architects get real clever in applying these, these rules, and I think we got something that's fighting.
I, I, I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, Ryan and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. At the A D U height limit, max height is sixteen feet. They can ask for a discretionary approval above that, but we don't have to give it to them. So if, is, is that accurate?
Well, starting, uh, starting on the first of this last year, under S P eight ninety-seven, there's some refinements to the height limits. So if it's an attached A D U, it can be uh, the height of the main house. It can be, it's either twenty-five feet or the height of the main house, whichever's lower, if it's attached to the main house. If it's detached, it's sixteen feet. Or if it's within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop, then uh, they can go up to eighteen.
Which we qualify because we are right there, including all the transit stops.
Complicated.
Yeah, can, can I ask that I get through my presentation and then we can dive into the-
Well, I, you know, I, I, I sense that you're maybe a tad offended by our questions because you have so much here to share with us, but this is very important to us. And, and when you could give us so much information, I don't wanna miss something that, especially with the A D U, because we, we are seeing these and we really need to understand the nuts and bolts of this. So, when I'm asking you a question, it's because I really need the answer. And I appreciate that you're taking the time to walk me through it. So forgive me if I stop you again, but it may happen.
And I'm not offended, I just want to try to help, help the commission through the information and answer all your questions in a certain way.
I appreciate that.
This is a precursor to the whole discussion. My understanding is, is that if we don't get through it all and continue it and wanna chew on it more, that's perfectly fine. Is that an accurate statement? Or is there some urgency from the council? I know generically there is, but-
This is important to the council, but it, it's important to the city-
To get it right.
That, that we do it right, so there's, there's no, there's no rush on this. Um, but one thing we are gonna do, Chris is using, is providing these um, examples upfront um, because there were a couple items that the commission wanted examples of, the last time we talked about this. Uh, the next thing that we'll go to is um, one of the charts, uh, one of the tables in the um, uh, in the report. And, and that'll go, I don't wanna say line by line through the red line version, but it will, that will highlight every single change. And we can refer back to some of these examples, um, uh, going between the two documents, it, or, are these in the slides? Did you put the, the table in the slides?
I have the PDFs, yeah.
So it, we wanted to start with the examples so that when we get to those places, we can um, refresh, refresh memories on, on, on the visuals of what we're talking about. But we will go through those charts and make sure that we're doing this line by line.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure to address what the commission had asked you the last time, to give examples. So, we wanted to do that first, but um, there's a lot of material and um, we, we can come back to this. I just wanted to kind of lay out what's there and we can go in whatever direction you want to go. The, the next item, it's just the last example, is if you, currently if you have an abutting, single-family or duplex-type project across the street from a historic structure, then uh, you would need to go to the planning commission. In this case, staff is proposing that staff would be able to approve a project. If it's across the street, um, the, the setback from the front property line to the building would be thirty feet. So, you're not gonna find a residential zone with a thirty-foot setback required in the code. It would have to be a bigger setback than the standard in the zone. There would have to be a five-foot setback between the first and second level. And the roof line would have to be lower than the main roof line of the historic building. So if there's topographical changes, it would have to be lower in scale than the historic building. This is an example of a project that went through the process. The building meets those sort of standards. Uh, there's a historic building in the yellow arrow. Uh, it's actually this red parcel. And then across the street is the blue parcel where the project was proposed and it's lower than the historic building at setback thirty feet. Uh, so staff's suggestion to discuss this item, um, of which, like I said, it can go in different directions. But to just give you an idea, is there's an attachment one that lays out the sections of the code that would change under this ordinance. And staff would have a question for you of, besides the streamlining item, are there other sections that you would want to look at? So that would be the first question. Then beyond that, there's a attachment two that has all the streamlining items. And of the streamlining items, which items would you want to discuss? Versus going page by page, if you wanna do that, we can. But I wanna start off the discussion with that suggestion. Uh, and then the conclusion is staff recommends approval of the ordinance. Uh, we do have a couple minor edits that we can come to as we go through uh, your questions and whatever items you wanna pull up. So, that concludes my presentation. And I can pull up those attachments if you wanna go that, that route of discussing it or in your own way.
Uh, go, go ahead. I'm open to suggestions however the commission wants to do it. I do have some page-by-page comments, kind of wordsmithing or questions. That's me personally, so um, I'll defer to the commissioner what their wishes are.
I went through it and I have where I have issues, you know, and other parts are fine. But I wanna take a step back for a minute and ask for indulgence to put some concepts out. Cause I think the framing of this is the most important thing. And we're not even talking about it. We can get into minutia, and we will. But I can tell you, it's gonna go right over the council's head. They are not planners, they don't understand this stuff. And there's gonna be a drumbeat faster, faster, faster. What I think we need to do is explain, and I would ask for um, staff to, to tell me if they're okay with this. But what's missing from this is framing. Meaning, what we're doing is we're making trade-offs. That's not framed. Those trade-offs are, you wanna go faster? Here's a way, here's an avenue, cut out public input. Here's some options. Here's your pros and cons. When you cut out public input in San Clemente with historical structures, you're gonna eliminate this. Here's what we're gonna propose instead. Is that okay? Without the minutia wrapping around twenty-five feet here, thirty-five feet there, that we can discuss if we want to. But I think the concept of, okay, when we're trying to slow things, trying to speed things up, one avenue is reduce public input. I can tell you, I've, you know, I've had the privilege of being on other planning commissions and it is always a complaint. What's with all the public hearings you guys do? It's so slow. It happens in other jurisdictions, it's a constant thing. But when you really step back and you think about it, what is the delay? Of an extra, is it a couple of weeks? Because we have to schedule, or maybe it's a month because you gotta schedule it, then you gotta have the hearing. But it's, but you compare that to other delays that are multiple months, not even in here. Give me, give, give you example. When you have an applicant go through our process, he, they submit what they think is a complete package, they wait four months, five months, and what do they hear back? You're missing something, start over. Four months, start over, thirty days for public hearing. What are we really saving?
Can I correct you for a second?
Yeah.
My understanding is that they have, city has a thirty-day requirement to determine if the application is complete. Is that accurate?
Yeah, if it qualifies under the Permit Streamlining Act, yes, there's a, there's a shot clock on a completeness determination.
But that's not everything, is it?
It, it, it's not everything, but it's, it's many things.
Right, cause I do get calls from people saying, hey, I have to start over again, I don't get it. So I think part of it is framing. Like, I think we should just frame things for the council in a way that they can understand and say, okay, if we want to streamline our, our process of, of um, how things are submitted to us, how we review them, how we get back to people, that should be a path. We can do these things. If we wanna save time by re, by removing public review, removing public comment, we can do these things. That way there's a context and a framing of how we're, of how, what they can look, how they can look at it. So they can give, and you can ask them, what's your guiding principle? Are you okay with less public review, or are you not okay with less public review? Then from there, you can, we can make adjustments, does that make sense? So that's kinda what I think as we go through this, we should say, is this a, are we accelerating this to, uh, by removing public input? Um, and roughly how much time are we saving by doing that? Is this something we're doing because we're streamlining the review of the work? And it's streamlining the way staff is gonna be able to process and expedite that with more guidelines, more structure, things like that. Because what I've observed in the past is when staff wants to spend time developing guidelines that upfront is a year, or six months, or nine months to develop these guidelines. And staff, and the council's like, well, that's a lot of investment, I'm not sure that, we wanna take, you know, take your eye off the ball to do that. But then the backend is, hey, if we had these, this is how much we could speed things up. Because then people could self-select, do this, not that. There's a decision tree for the public to follow and their submissions are more complete. Things get processed faster on the backend. And so for me, that's what I feel like um, should be the final package that goes to the council is positioning that with the context.
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
So I don't disagree with what you're saying. But I don't think we, you know, what you're talking about is staff time versus planning commission time. We don't have any control over staff time. I do these submittals, okay? It has to go to Public Works, it has to go to sometimes Orange County Fire.
Right.
It has to go to Planning, it has to go to all these different agencies. And they're busy, they're understaffed. The stuff sits on their desk, especially Public Works, I hate to say. Seems to be in my experience. But I don't think we have the ability to streamline that process. Only we have the ability to streamline is whether it comes to us or not, which is what they're talking about, right? So, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're wasting our time here if we think we're gonna have any impact-
Right.
-on the streamlining of the staff review. Because like Hannibal mentioned, with this project tonight, he spent eighteen months with staff before it even got to us. I think he might have been talking about the whole thing. But it could have easily been twelve months. Or, and for a project, it's not a huge project. I mean, it's an important project for us as a city. But it's a small mixed-use development. And the part of it that we were involved in, you know, the designer view, we tried to move it along as quickly as we could. That's the kind of a thing, I think for that project, obviously, where we needed to look at it. But I think we really need to consider the number, cause I was shocked when I became a planning commissioner and then got on the designer view committee, how many projects we have to look at. It's like, really? W- w- why? And, and it was, okay, it's three hundred feet from a historical structure. So we gotta review that thing? And most times, yeah, we looked at them, right? But it wasn't, it wasn't a big deal, wasn't a big impact. And I, I think in general, that, that's the direction we need to go is let's give staff a little more leeway on these smaller projects. I think these kind of criteria like, you know, a hundred and fifty feet or whatever, or at least two parcels.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if there's a street especially, those are the kind of things they can handle.
Sure.
And, and we're gonna cut, okay, you guys may not agree, but we're gonna cut a couple months out of their process, most likely.
Right.
If we don't have to review that.
Can I weigh in on this real quick too? Again, I don't disagree with what you said. But the flip side is, cause what I kinda heard you say is, well, we should position it to council and we should get feedback from council on, do they wanna do this and get this much review or that much review? I don't think council cares. Council has essentially hired us to, to subcontract out the land use stuff. And they want us to use our best judgment and then they're in all likelihood gonna take our recommendation. So, so we should just use our best judgment and give it to them. That's my, that's my two cents.
They did hire us to do that, but with this, they're cutting us out of that.
Only on certain-
I understand, but they're cutting what we're hired to kind of, I value this commission. Like, what, the feedback you guys gave, I'm sure what that project that we just approved looked like the first time around versus now?
Night and day.
Night and day. And could they have streamlined that or not? If they could have streamlined that, you would never had eyes on it.
That project was way too big.
Yeah.
Baby-ish.
No, way too big.
Okay.
It's not in, it's not in, if you read the language of what's being proposed,
Yeah.
they're talking about, li- literally, so you weren't here. When we all got put on, except for Bart who was already here, the first meeting we had, we had to remodel like a triplex
Yeah.
that was like two hundred and ninety-nine feet away from us, from Ole Hanson House, way over there. And I was Steve, I'm like, what the heck are we doing? Yes, they're gonna remodel it and make it better, why are we slowing them down?
I agree with some of it, but it needs to be structured so well. Because we don't know who's on staff, what, it's their first day out of college.
We have ultimately Adam.
Well, Adam, of course, he watched- Well, Adam, of course, he watches everybody's move, but, but it's not really, he has people under him that he trusts. But where if it's a, you know what I mean? Like, what are we, where are we, are we giving all that control to staff? It's so, I think the control that we give up, if there is any control, but the control that we give up needs to be very, very, very defined.
And that's exactly what they've done here, is they've defined it very specifically.
So we need to hammer out every definition.
By exception, where we think. You know, my concern is there's one big piece missing and it's kind of what Steve has kind of talked to. I mean, there's a big part here that's the council's fault. And that is money. If you want Public Works to process the plan faster, then you need to get more Public Works Plan Checkers, you know, employed. And we don't have control of that. The other is the non-city agencies that it goes to, like if it's got to go to police or if it's got to go to Orange County, you know, for some reason, we don't have control of that. You know, we don't have control of that desk time. But the council does have control of the desk time in the city. If you want to get those Public Works, you know, things going through, then you got to hire more people.
That's a better way, what I'm, was trying to say.
And that's missing in this report. But in this report, which the council has kind of very sneakily said, you know, how can we do it within the city or what's the problem? My biggest concern is that we can't streamline the system with, for the applicant without weighing what we're taking away from the general public, like the neighbors. And if that means that we are not noticing, or it doesn't go into the newspaper, or reducing, or maybe not noticing at all, then we're making significant changes for the complaints to come in that, because you've got two people here that have property rights. One is the applicant and one is the people that live next door. They're affected by the project. This doesn't respect the person next door if you're taking away some issues from the planning commission or the zoning administrator that might require noticing. Either in the paper or locally by, you know, the area, the radius going out. And that's really the whole thing. I mean, we're only seeing a small part. One big thing is, we probably wouldn't be talking about it if we had enough Plan Checkers. And if we had enough people in the Public Works Department to get the product through, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, but every city has that problem.
But we, but all my years in other cities, I've never heard, it's always been, well, it's because our, there's a bottleneck. Either in Public Works or the, the Building Department. And the only way you get out of it, either hire people or you contract it out, big time. We did contract out big time, you know, for a while to get through a bottleneck, I mean, in another city. But here, they're kind of putting the onus that it's, it's on the system and.
When they contract out, it takes twice as long.
But you cannot take away the right of the citizen to input. And that's, that's my biggest thing here is if you keep the notice system the same, even though it goes to zoning administrator, then I don't really have a problem. But, you know, with whatever you do, just as long as the person next door knows what's going on. And you're not taking that away from them because his property is affect, his or her property is affected.
And, and a couple of things to keep in mind is, one, these items that, that, that staff has put together and selected are ones that through experience, they feel have been less controversial. So, so based on their experience, you know, they don't get so much outcry from the neighbor 299 feet away from the historic structure. The other thing is that embedded in the language in here is that at any time, if staff feels like it's potentially a controversial item, they can and will kick it up to us. They'll kick it up a level. There's provisions for them if they, they're uncomfortable with it, to kick it up. Is that accurate, Adam or Chris?
Yes.
But if there's no notice, if it changes from a notice situation to no notice, they'll never know. The change will just happen.
It's in the.
The neighbor will never know. The neighbor will never know.
And.
Because there's some things here where it goes from planning commission to either zoning administrator or planning commission to administrator, which removes the noticing requirement unless we put in there that there's no changing of, these changes will not result in any noticing requirements. Then I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, but there's no methodology.
These are all good calls. Going to public. Say when we get a chance.
That's right. So when you take it from the planning commission, it's not a public hearing, so it's not noticed. And that, so you're taking away the rights, the other part, there's the applicant and the people who live next door.
Yeah, but what you're suggesting is the public notice.
Has to stay in place.
Even if it doesn't go to planning commission?
No, you just notice it to go to ZA.
Notice it to go to the administrator and even notice it to go to the zoning administrator.
Yeah, but what they're saying is it's not going to go to ZA or planning commission because of the scale. And let's say the public importance of the project. So there's no methodology, as far as I know, for it to be public notice if it's not going to go to a public hearing. Am I correct on that?
Sure. So they're taking away things that the, that the people, the next door neighbor would usually be able to know and to put, put in their feelings. But an administrator can make the decision and the next door neighbor won't know how his property rights have been affected.
He will. If it's only if it's two parcels, two parcels away.
No, I'm talking about any of the changes that, once they see the planning commission is not involved, there's eight or nine things here that the planning commission, anything that says PC, that just in the examples, no longer has a public hearing or noticing.
Bart wanted to weigh in.
I wanted to weigh in real quick. We've, we've kind of lost why we're, where we're at. When the general plan was redone eight, 10 years ago, these discussions were had. It's very same discussion. And even before that, these same things. And as far as, I'm specifically focusing in on historic properties. They determined that's what is the heart of the city, it's the Spanish village by the sea. And they wanted to protect it. And that's how all these things came to be. And they wanted multiple eyes looking over it. They wanted the historic society to have input on it. They wanted the public to be aware of it at least. But all they can do is comment and pass the word along. And really, it's not a huge proportion of the permits that get issued in this city that there are complaints about. I mean, these mixed use ones, which may or may not require cultural heritage permits, are the ones that are the most vocal. Those builders are hard-nosed, they know what they're doing. They're going to complain to whoever. But what percentage of our permits involve a cultural heritage permit total? It's not very much. I mean, how many, how many historic properties do we have in the city?
160.
160? Let's say there's 100. Go three lots on each side. That would be 600 lots in this entire city that we're talking about that are affected. That's nothing.
My experience is different than that. My experience.
Well.
Word-related projects, even if they're 200 feet away or 100 feet away or.
Well, that's because they require additional work and it's been determined by previous planning commissions, previous city councils, the G-PAC committee and all, that came up with all this to protect them. And we have had lots that are 300 feet away from an historic property that did affect the historic property.
So there's your increased manpower by reducing the staff effort on, if we cut out a bunch of their workload through this, then boom, we have more manpower to respond to and get things through the pipeline quicker.
To respond to what Commissioner Crandall said. That's where I think the planning director or the senior, whoever it is, has the discretion to look at it and say, yeah, this is going to impact a historic property more so than just a 300 foot radius or whatever. I think, and that's what they're looking for, correct me if I'm wrong, is to be able to make that call. And these are, well, Adam's a smart guy.
Oh, I agree with you. Agree with you 100%. The problem is that same discussion was had and they chose the other direction. So we're reversing the path that's already been taken.
That's why we are what we are. And we're not Dana Point, we're not Laguna, and we're not Downey or Irvine, you know? And there is concern as we see all the buildout surrounding us. We're not San Diego where half the time there's no height limit. It's because we are the village by the Spanish village by the sea. That's, that is our legacy and we do need to protect that. And I agree with Commissioner Crandall as there is history involved to how we got here and we need to preserve that. And if it takes staff time, the majority of staff time, there's, it's because it's valuable and the input of the public is equally valuable. So maybe we need to take something else off the plate.
Well, the exact directive to staff from council was look for places to streamline.
And track it was going to help, I understand.
Yes.
Yeah, but. I wish I had that directive from the city council. That would have helped.
I don't think the city council would disagree with that. We need to preserve our history.
No, there's not room to do it with the guidelines the citizens have said they want enforced.
That's something that I wanted to bring to your attention in the report. It does explain that. Adopt a resolution recommending approval of the zoning amendments as approved to provide staff with alternative direction for the amendments that likely would involve continuing or taking depending upon what is suggested. That may mean changing the level of review for some streamlining items. It could involve changing criteria for what would involve administrative breaking items proposed. And then you are forwarding a recommendation to city council.
Right.
They want to do, but that, that's the role of the planning.
And Chris's direction was to find things to do. These aren't necessarily self-generated. He was looking for things to do to follow the direction that city council gave him. And that's totally appreciated.
Yeah, if I could clarify one thing, the list of items that Chris is referring to were presented to the city council and their direction was move forward with those specific items.
Let me clarify that with you, because it's very important to me, if you don't mind, Adam. So you're saying that city council, even every one of them probably ran on preserving the Spanish village by the sea, targeted this as. Okay, so, so this was, this was an actual directive that they, they wanted to, to look at this area.
Yes, so the list that was presented to the, it was a new business item to the planning commission last year. It was the first time we talked about permit streamlining with the commission, right? That list was provided to the city council at their request for staff's, staff's recommendations of ways to streamline the code. And they directed us to begin the implementation process.
Permits in general, but not to where it was focused on the historical side.
No, like, I mean, we, we had, we have refined that list into an amended ordinance. But the discussion of detached buildings, having, you know, having the height limit of the zone, reducing the level of review for projects next to historic, I don't want to say next to, but, you know, within proximity of historic properties. All of that stuff was, was presented to the council. They, they saw that. We, we've basically codified, proposed a codification of those recommendations in this ordinance. The recommendations, when the council asked for those, staff had them because they were things that we have had in, on a list of things that we may want to work on in the future for years. Permit streamlining has come up multiple times. These are things that were just always on the list, either never made it into an ordinance or they were things that have popped up on our radar in the last few years, things of that nature. But the city council saw a relatively close version of the proposals that we're, that we're making here.
Let me add one thing real quick, and I see you, Brent. For the moment, and over the last 10 or 15 minutes, we've been focused on historical adjacency. And, you know, and its impacts. But there's other stuff in here as well that's not historical. It has to do with the overlay districts and, and residential near commercial or commercial near residential, whatever. So, so the historical component is one aspect of it. Brent, did you have?
Is there ever, you know, so this new city council comes in and Bart's got history here. He understands like, we've been through this 10 years ago and we adopted where we are because of those discussions and it's kind of a lot of the tone that a lot of us are having up here with preserving San Clemente. But is there ever like a, a meeting with the planning commission and the city council in one place that we could say, this is what we're thinking, guys? We're like, this is our targeted job is planning commission. Their target, their scope is much broader. So they, you know, I, I just, I don't know. It, it feels like they should hear us more than just a, they denied it or they approved it.
Sorry, how that worked?
Yeah. Memorial care?
Yeah.
So that, that is the, the type of meeting.
I wouldn't.
I, I think what we could do, again, back to, is they've kind of hired us. They want us to do the nitty gritty on this. They're looking at the high level. Adam says they've already kind of basically blessed the high level. Now we're trying to implement it. If.
Two of them now?
The body. Mayor James is.
Yeah, Ben Mayor James brought this up as well. Now, what I'm saying is blessing it from a high level, they're interested in moving it forward. Some, I would say, were much more interested in, in streamlining the streamlining permit process. But. They gave the direction to move forward with the recommendations that we had. Now, in order to initiate, or excuse me, in order to amend the zoning ordinance, it needs to be reviewed by the, by the planning commission first. And so that's the direction is to provide it to, to the planning commission for your recommendation. And so at this point, you know, there, there's, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of kind of the options. One, one is we, you know, continue the conversation at hand. We can go through this ordinance in any fashion you want. We could go through the red line version, we could go through one of the, the tables. Chris has one of these up right now. This is attachment one we're looking at. Or if there is some other direction that the commission would like to take, if maybe additional time to review everything.
Well, I'm going to ask for the additional time.
Would be good, then we're, we're fine doing that. We could also do some meetings. We could, I mean, this is basically a study session at this point. And you guys can actually deliberate on this, which is.
Well, I think we have, but I want to ask you a question about the track it. Because to me, that is part of a major streamline. And I've yet to seen it. I would like to, you know, we were going to go through that and, and, and so when will that happen? Because it may play into what we're viewing here.
Yeah, so the track it upgrade, it's, it has not been fully rolled out. What we're waiting for is, it's, it's dependent on a couple IT milestones, I'll call them, is the online application process for planning permits.
Which a lot of cities have.
To get that rolled out. However, that's, while planning has, has got that together, and that was one of Chris's projects as well. It has not been implemented yet, so it's not. projects as well, it has not been implemented yet, so it's not live. And we want a couple of weeks to kind of play with it when, once it becomes live.
I've been hearing about a couple of weeks, and so now we're a couple of weeks and a couple of weeks. And I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I'm, I, I want to get back to the permit process, which I have heard from city council is one of their concerns. And we all deal with other cities. We're all in some version of construction or planning in our day jobs or in our, from retirement. And other areas have a streamline where the applicant can go into it, like a Tracket, and they can follow it, and they know when there's a glitch or it's sitting on someone's desk, or it, it doesn't go back if they have a change, it doesn't go back to the bottom of the pile, which was mentioned, and that happens a lot. The Tracket might be an immediate fix to some of the pains that we have. And then we can start to digest other areas to relieve some of the stresses that come our direction and to the staff. Historical, I don't want to touch. I think leading with that first probably was, it, it caused us all to, to pause and, and say, wait, wait a minute. This is, this is an area that's sacred, in a sense, and we don't want to, we don't want to touch that. It, it seems to be working, and it was part of who we are, where we came from. And I can guarantee every city council who put something in the paper or an ad started with a Spanish Village by the Sea and to preserve it. I don't know one that, that didn't. And I, I think in their ballot statements, it, it was all in there. So that's my direction from them, and that's where I'm going to stay with this. So I need more time. I'm not, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I want to see the Tracket. I want to know when it's going to come up, and that would help. And I think it would help staff as well.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the, internally speaking, and to some extent to the, for the public's benefit as well, the, the migration of Tracket has gone from a desktop app to a cloud-based version.
Okay.
What we're waiting for, and, and this is, planning has gotten our, what we've provided to, to the IT division, what they need to get this online, but there's a couple of things that they're still working through. So that hasn't rolled out completely yet. Once that does, that, that, that's what's holding up this study session on that particular item. And as soon as, as soon as we have that up and running, and we have a chance to play with it a little bit and just make sure it's all ready to go, we'll put on a, a study session about that item specifically.
That would be fantastic. Christopher's put a lot of work into this, and I do remember, you know, that we all felt it would be beneficial, that the redlining would be evident so that we could see what would be changed. But I'm just speaking for myself, I need more time. And I want to completely understand what the city council was thinking. Maybe I want to go back and review some of their, their tapes. I, I think they, they had the bigger picture of, we want to streamline it. I don't think they would want it to have us amend what was put down before as far as our, our history.
If, if I may, if the commission is collectively inclined to, to continue this, to, to allow more time to digest it and, and research, my recommendation, because this is agendized, obviously, we don't have members in the public here right now, but this is agendized as a public hearing, so my recommendation would be to open the public hearing and then leave it open, and then have the motion be to continue it to a date certain. If that's the direction that the council or the commission wants to go.
Before we do that, don't we have any manual data? Like where the blockage may be? When I've done building permits, like in other cities, once I put in my, you know, the stuff that's required, attached to it was a, you know, a paper that said where it had to go now and the dates. Don't we have some kind of system like that where we could recall what our applications have been, where they've been, and how long they took, and where they sat? Because I know that was a big problem in another city, and then when they addressed it, that was what they relied on to find out where the problems were. In other words, the data, like a time study, how many days did it spend in, you know, planning? And they sent it to Public Works, how many days, how many days have been at the fire department in their review? And that's how they figured, that's how the council there figured out where the problem was, or problems were.
Yes, that's a great, that's a great point. A lot of those metrics are reported annually in the budget. So the planning division's performance measures include data about how long it takes to process permits, how many plan checks we do. We're not really talking about building permit plan checks by planning staff in this particular project. But I know the Orange County Fire Authority reports those numbers, the building division, of course, reports those numbers. So there, there is that data available. I will say, you know, the last two years are going to be a little bit wonky because COVID had a huge impact on, on, on what we've taken in. But I mean, we could easily provide that information.
So like, if I went into bill at the planning department, I could say, you know, here's application ABC, you could tell me when you received it, and when it was finally completed, and how many days it's been in each department?
Yes.
Is there a graph or like a colored graph or something you could show us?
We would have to create it, but we could create, I mean, we could provide that, we could provide that data.
Let me ask, Chris and Adam.
We have, we don't have the information.
Yeah.
Let's talk history again. We've had outside consultants do an audit of our approval process in the past.
Yes.
Do we have those old records? They didn't look at specific ordinances or anything, but they looked at this process that they're talking about, the, the punch list and how long it took in each thing. And they put a cost to it, I believe, even for how long it took staff to do each one.
There are a number of things that they looked at. It's been some time.
It has.
Looked at the report, but they had a number of recommendations.
Did we implement any of them?
Were related to the general plan and all our big policy documents. Beyond that, there were a number of things. I, I don't remember, you know, what they looked at. I know they interviewed a bunch of people as part of that, including members of the community. But that were.
You're not getting it here.
But I mean, that would be a great.
Open mic.
Primer for, for the planning commissioners to look at just to see what they considered
So you're not reinventing the wheel.
Were bottlenecks and important to understand in the overall picture. So if we, even though it's old, I think the thought process of reviewing it would be the same in today's world.
You know, I think it helps a little bit. You know, my suggestion is if the item is continued, possibly we meet individually. Because I've, I've worked on a bunch of projects like this where they can go on. And in the end, it helps to come back to what your rule is. With, you know, 90% of the changes in here, you don't have to recommend approval of those 90%. Going around and around and trying to find ways to. Agree with things, you don't have. Those new things that you think are. But, you know, it helps to go back to these examples. The examples are things that the commission asked for from the last time it came to the election. Those are, I would even argue, maybe those are the more substantive changes you could make there. But the, it's really important to note here that we have a lot of applications. That number comes and works for us. There is a learning curve because we have something like 20, 25 applications. The biggest benefits of these.
25 per, per week?
No.
Different kinds.
Types of permits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And so, like, this ordinance consolidates a number of those permits. It, it has really, it's taking the site plan permit, the minor site plan permit, the architectural permit, the minor architectural permit, the minor culture heritage permit, the staff waiver of a minor cultural heritage. Staff waiver of a minor architectural permit, and it's taking those and putting into the three permits.
Right, but that's what I, my original point. I think there's no framework here. I don't understand the context. I, I could look at this, and I read it, I'm like, I'm cool with this, that's fine. There is some negatives, but I could live with this. On actually 90% of them. But I kind of feel like we're not doing a complete job. We're just looking at what you're giving us, number one, and we're not looking outside the box and saying, well, if we did hire two more people, one in public works and one in planning, we would reduce our overall time by this. And I know that one of the things when I listen to council meetings is, there's this attitude of, you don't need more staff, you can just work harder, you can get it done. And I don't, I don't think we have the metrics to make the case to say, well, if we look at a 24-month moving average of the number of applications we have, and we put a level of effort, these applications are most hardest, these are easiest, here's the, here's the numbers. So you can see we have this more exponential increase in harder ones to do. There's no data to have a conversation around metrics that says, oh, and by the way, we've been, you know, this is our staffing level, we've been below staff, and now we have this backlog. All that, to me, I have no idea what that is. But those are the conversations that ideally, you could have two as part of this, and maybe that could be a part two of this, we could focus on this, but I would not, I would feel remiss if we didn't at least look at metrics, and we looked at data, and we talked about that kind of stuff. So that's one, kind of one thing I was saying. The other thing I was trying to say is if we look at, attachment two, for me, was the easiest one to understand. And so if you had another column in there that said impact, and the impact is, oh, we're streamlining what you said, multiple applications, we're making it simpler, I could, then I could see the benefit to that. But I'd also like to see, impact is, there will be less public notice on this. This will impact the public. You know, if we had that impact statement on this, on attachment two, I feel like we could just go through, go through line by line and go up, down, up, down. Wordsmith the impact, send it on. And then we could have another go around on Tracket, metrics, you know, those kinds of things. So we could have a better understanding for how the flow.
Maybe I wasn't clear, what I was saying is, even if you were to not change how things are reviewed, but the way that they're packaged in the code, what you call a permit matters, right? Is it intuitive to the member of the public? Just as if, just as if, is the code written in a way that's clear? That matters, right?
Absolutely.
We have a lot of permits, so even if you don't change the process, but you make the code simpler and easier to understand, that was what my point was.
No, and I, what I'm, I'm amplifying your point and saying, but of, like, if you look at attachment two, Christopher, which one of these rows does that? If that could be highlighted, just that point you just made, I would love to know of attachment two on these, all these rows, which one, which one of these rows are that, are those things that you just said?
From the comments that I'm getting so far, is the concerns are really related to the process change, not how you package it. The packaging of things is making it easier to read.
Well, we haven't even really gotten to the, we haven't even discussed the packaging stuff at all.
I, I'm just, I'm just giving, going off my impression. It's, it's a little, keep in mind, there's, there's a difference between streamlining and then how things are written. And, and so, for example, right now, a culture heritage permit, instead of it being abstracted, I'll give you an example. So a culture heritage permit right now applies to projects in the architectural overlay. It applies to projects that are abutting historic buildings. If it's within 300 feet of a historic building, if it is a historic building. But when you look at the purpose and intent of a culture heritage permit and the nature of the findings, it's focused really on historic buildings, the policies for preserving historic buildings. So the changes that are proposed here would make the culture heritage permit about historic buildings, historic sites. The architectural overlay and the abutting the historic buildings and proximity to the historic buildings, those are different findings. They're not, they're not related to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. That's different. So those in the draft are packaged with a development permit, because a lot of people know what a development permit probably would mean versus a minor architectural permit that would include a site plan review and an architectural review. So that's what I'm talking about, is, is, it's having less permits, what they're named, and, and then getting into the weeds of, when does something need to go to ZA or the zoning administrator versus staff, and when does it need to go to the planning commission? That's what's in attachment two. Attachment two is, when does something go from the planning commission's zoning administrator, and what determines that? Is it 2,000 square feet or more, or is it less than 2,000? That's attachment two. And that's what I'm hearing most of the concerns are about, that. I'm not trying to put words in, not trying to put words in your mouth.
Where's the other stuff that you talked about? Where is that in the package? Is that in the red line?
It's, I described that in attachment one. Attachment one is a high-level summary of the ordinance, but I, but staff recognized, at least our hunch was, that most of the conversation would be related to changing a process, right? That's streamlining.
This guy.
That is high level. So you're going to see in there, it talks about staff waiver, and it says deleted, it says replaced with an administrative development permit. And then it tells you, I have a whole thing in the table that explains, what is the administrative development permit for?
Because in my packet, it goes from the summary to attachment two. I don't have an attachment one. Unless it's out of order.
Oh, yeah, it's in there. This is attachment one.
The summary is.
It was, the summary, this is attachment one.
Oh, okay.
They're both, they're both important more for the sense of, if, if I were a planning commissioner, I would want to know what sections of the code are being changed first.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's attachment one. High level, like, what's happening to the culture heritage permit? Now, like I just described to you.
Yeah.
Then it's attached, then I figured, A, the planning commission's probably going to be mostly concerned about, when does this thing go from the planning commission to the zoning administrator? All that stuff, streamlining, is in attachment two.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then I have page numbers to refer to where those changes are, so you're not searching through the document. If you, in the, in the particular place of Commissioner Loeffler about the height limit change, you can look in the table, streamlining, and you say, okay, well, it's page G3, and you could go there. But at this point, it does seem like there's quite a delta between the list that we got from the city council and the type of comments I'm getting from the commission. And somehow, you need to reconcile that, you know? Is there going to be support for, like, if we change all the criteria and you add noticing, are we going to get to the place where the city council gave us the list?
I don't know that.
Give me a sec. Maybe what we could do is get, in the next go around, because I think we're going to continue this thing, after we open the public hearing, right? Gotcha. Is, is get what was given to council, and maybe even we watch a 10, 15-minute discussion of the, of their, you know, last, when they talked about it or whatever, I don't know, so we can get a sense of where they were coming from and what, what our impression is of what they wanted.
We could do that in our own time, just tell us what, what date it was.
Well, we, we could certainly, but we'd like to get what they were given, I guess.
Maybe if I, I could just make a quick statement. I think we're all in favor of simplifying the process.
This stuff.
The things that we're concerned about, because, you know, you've got, you know, it takes a lot of effort just to. you know, it takes a lot of effort just to figure out which applications to turn in. That's what you're talking about.
Yes.
We're all in favor of boiling it down
Right.
to, you know, site plan review, or whatever you want to call it, right? And including these things, so there is a checklist. Because even when you get new staff planners, oftentimes, they don't know. You know, what, what do we, what's, what's required to move this thing along? That would be a big benefit. The thing we're concerned about the most is areas where it affects the character of the city, in a, in a sort of a broad sense.
Nailed it.
And those are the ones that we, we can let the council know, maybe even that, hey, we don't really want to mess with those. But, but I think simplification is gonna go a long way.
Hundred percent. And that's all I was trying to say, is the framework, which ones are simplifications? Go. These, they're, you're, you're messing around with the culture of the city, you're messing around with the public's, the public's opportunity. Proceed with caution, or don't do that.
Because the new staff member that you said is learning curve, they're gonna prove something just accidentally, right? And the neighbor doesn't even realize it till the, it's, it's all framed out. It's like, whoa, I didn't know that was happening.
When that gets back to the noticing requirements, like,
That's right.
Doctor, what was I talking about?
Another thing is, I think data-driven decisions are easier to make. And so if, like, we're talking where the bottlenecks are, it'd be nice to see where the bottlenecks are. Are they even here? Is this even gonna really matter? This is two, three, four weeks maybe in a delay, but if all the other bottlenecks are somewhere else, and they've been that way for ten years, let's maybe look at that. And then I think staff could probably use that data that we're asking for and see where, where things are getting bottlenecked, and, and maybe take some pressure off of you to do more, and say, hey, city council, this is the data, we need more staff.
We, you know, we could consider, you know, like, getting some data, I'll just, there's.
So Chris, let me, I'll step in. So at this point, there have been a number of ideas for information that the commission would like. It seems like, and we're fine talking about the actual proposed ordinance, if there's lingering questions, but if there are specific things that you would like, assuming this is going to be continued, let us know what, what that is, and that'll help inform how fast we'd be able to get this back to the planning commission.
Let me ask you, Adam, what is, what does your budget cycle look like? What's the timing on that?
The budget is adopted before.
When do you need to submit your budget to the city manager's office?
Oh, that starts maybe four weeks.
Okay. Because I think we should bifurcate that whole metrics thing and your staffing level separate from what, what Christopher's done here. I, I think part of what I was reacting to is just, I didn't understand how it was organized. Now I have a better understanding. The stuff that I, you're calling attachment one, I think is the, the good stuff, the consolidation stuff. I think that's, there's agreement across the board, we all want to do this. So maybe, you know, we need to really understand what this is. Because I think you're gonna get agreement on that pretty quick. And then the actual part where we're changing the culture of the city with what we notify, don't notify, we should take that separate, so we can actually really talk about that in the context of, well, maybe we could have the Z A do it, or have it be an administrative approval, if there is notice. And then depending on the reaction you get, because that was one of the questions I had, there's all these caveats that say, well, if it's a controversy, we'll bump it up. How would you know unless you notice it? So to me, that's, if we, that's how I would, I don't know, I'm just making a suggestion. We go over your consolidation type stuff, and I wouldn't mind having a one-on-one with you, Christopher, to kind of understand this. So at the next meeting, I can just come in with, okay, this is what I understood, and I have an issue with, and I, we can just, by exception. Instead of going through line by line, I could go through this with you for a couple hours, one-on-one, make sure I get it, I don't know who else wants to do that, it'd be, we could do two groups of two, and then be prepared at the next meeting at least to get this off your plate.
And a benefit statement as to time it will save, the process will be sped up by a week? I mean, we can go through that, but I don't, I don't have the end, I don't know what it leads to.
I'm not sure, I understand what you're saying,
Okay.
Commissioner, but I'm not sure that it gets staff where they want to be, because what they ultimately want is an, is a, is a recommended ordinance, with ordinance language. And the ordinance language incorporates the attachment one and the attachment two things. So you could go through this and get approval, and you revise the ordinance language, and you go up, and then two months later, we're going back with new ordinance language for the other stuff? Like, that just seems.
Well, I'm not suggesting that they, we separate it like that. I'm just saying, I would like, I would like to go through the consolidation stuff before the next meeting. And maybe as part of that meeting, I could go through very quickly where I have concerns about notice, get a better understanding of how we could make it better, and we could do them both. But I understand now, one is really consolidating the application, it's consolidating those things versus the noticing stuff, and who does make, who's the decision maker?
The actual implementation.
Yeah, so those are two separate things, and they need to be thought about in two different ways. Now I understand that, if I had some time with Christopher to go through my questions, I could be prepared next meeting, just with my exceptions.
Okay, here's, I'll, I'll make a suggestion. That we, after we open the public hearing, that we, we give it maybe like six weeks or something, and then that, I would think would be maybe enough time for us to, or maybe four weeks, I don't know, to get through it in more detail in light of this conversation. And then if anybody has specific, you know, issues and things that they want to really drill down on, they can contact staff, meet with staff, and get to them, and then come back at a future meeting, a little bit more informed.
Including a video, tell me when that was with the city council that directed, and what their intentions were?
We could just go back to YouTube ourselves.
That, that information is in the, is in the staff report, but I, I can email links to the specific minutes in the city council videos,
That's what I want to.
where they, where they discuss.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Can you give us links to the data? Like, when you do your annual, like, maybe the last two or three years, how many applications, how long it took?
Yeah, let me, we can connect offline, just make sure I'm getting exactly what you.
What is the major?
Because I'm ready, I'm ready to prove anything that doesn't affect the noticing requirements that currently exist to the public.
But not everyone is, it sounds like.
Okay, but that's my, I'm, I'm ready to deal with that, and, you know, if you change anything that goes from like planning commission to zoning administrator eliminates notice, then I'll vote against the whole thing.
Right.
If you don't split it out. I mean, right now, I'm ready. I've already, I told him that in one meeting already when we went through it.
Right, and I'm ready too, but I don't think everybody is, so, so, and we've certainly learned a lot here all collectively.
I'm ready to move tonight, but I'm, I'm gonna do whatever you guys want to do.
Does the majority like the idea of delaying it and continuing, and if so, how long? Give me your thought.
Well, obviously, Chris has a workload that he's gotta do other things than just this. So I think we need to give enough time for him to not postpone, or we're causing a bottleneck.
We could do a straw poll, who wants to be this guy, and see how many people that is.
One thing to always keep in mind is, with all, all of our approvals here at this stage or in design review, if the applicants come in with a good project, that they've done their homework, and studied our design guidelines, they can get approved the first time. And these people that are complaining about the delays may have had to go through three meetings because either they aren't conscientious in listening to us, or aren't listening to us, or just are the wrong people to be doing the project. I mean, there's some architects that don't do the homework as well as they should. So does that mean our system's wrong? I don't think so. You know, these people that have to go through multiple meetings, it's not necessarily our fault, because we're just applying the rules, and if they followed those and the guidelines, et cetera, it could be a one-hit wonder and go straight on through, and we have those projects. And I guarantee that most of our local architects can get things through that quickly. But people from out of state, or corporate guys who are trying to push something through, because that's what their client wants, they take longer, until we can.
And then they complain.
And then they complain, and they're, you know, they're the big hitters. So that's what the city council's hearing also, not just these things. But before we go on, we're lucky to have Chris. He knows this stuff, he goes through it, he's between a rock and hard place, and I value his input also, so.
So Bart, how long would you recommend? What's your thought of when we should try and come back with this?
Well, I wouldn't want it to come on a busy schedule. In other words, if we can look at what our future workload is on, I mean, this, this is almost gonna take a whole meeting to go through, with nothing else on the agenda. So it should be, only have a really short agenda if we know when that's gonna be.
So here's our considerations. We would need to re-notice everything if there's, if a date certain continuance is not made.
We can do a date certain, and even continue it again if we need to.
Yeah, so I'm not entirely clear what the planning commission would like to do between now and the next meeting. If you would like to meet with staff, let's just say, all of those meetings can occur within the next two weeks. We would be a month from that, from the end of those meetings, until this comes back. So I would say, if, if the, if there's a desire to meet with staff individually or in pairs, I mean, as long as there's not a quorum, that's, that's what we're looking for, then we would be at the February, no, February 21st, March 8th.
Okay. Well, I think anybody who wants to meet with you could self-identify and make those arrangements. Please do it within the next two weeks, it sounds like. I would like to open the public hearing on this item. And are there any members of the public that would like to speak? We'll leave the public hearing open. I do want to mention just a couple things really quickly. One is, I think part of delays is the building department and building plan check. That, I'll talk to you about that offline, actually. But one thing I'd like for my fellow commissioners to look at and consider and really think about as you review this is story polls. There's a story poll section in here, and in my opinion, story polls are antiquated, they don't work well, they can be extremely expensive to the applicant and provide a very little value. Especially when you consider that now with today's computer graphics. I mean, look at the graphics that we get for Calvada, or Moana, or whatever you want to call it. I mean, it's phenomenal, and you can see it, and, and you can see it from every angle, every perspective, and show the shadowing, and, and so I'm, in case you haven't figured it out, not a fan of story polls.
I'm gonna disagree, because I do think they have value.
They have some value, but.
Especially when, when you have a view line, and that graphic, as we heard in, in that one project, Memorial Care, how many did we, residents said the graphic did not serve their view justice.
Okay, so, we heard them say that, but is, is it accurate? Because their thing, I mean, the guys used state-of-the-art software to say, this is where the building is. And if those people believe that it's gonna be bigger, that doesn't make it true.
It was state-of-the-art software, but it still did not reveal the actual truth that a story poll will give you right then and there. I mean, if you had a story poll, which many of the residents asked for, they would have seen that it either did or did not obstruct their view. And the data that you put into those graphics will come back as, as is. But, you know, we're gonna disagree on that, and I, and I do think they have value, so I don't want to see them removed. But do they have to be used every time? No, they don't.
Well, the other thing is, that the way it's written is, you have to story poll out all the decks and all the balconies, and put a whole bunch of, you're gonna have lines everywhere that's completely confusing and not, so, so if there was just the high points, that's one thing.
And the heights.
But.
I mean, even, even in commercial, they still use story polls when there is a height area.
I, I understand.
And they have all, and these big corporations have all the technology that, that we saw for Memorial Care, but they still use story polls. They still do, because of those reasons. And, and, you know, I see, I, I've traveled down the freeway down, you know, to a different county, and I can still see the story polls along the freeway and all the projects. And they, and they still have all the, the virtual technology that they also use. So I don't want to see them go away, but I, I think we can tweak that.
Yeah, so, so just so you know, like, the Memorial Care, their quote for story polls was over a hundred thousand dollars.
I know, it was a hundred thousand dollars, I know.
So, I mean, it's, I'm not saying there's not a place for some, maybe top line, but having excessive and having to do them all the time is, is burdensome to allocate. So it's just something to, for, for, focus on it, please,
Cost.
when, when, when we're going through this. So is there anything else anybody wants to say?
Do we want to close the hearing? Because then we don't have to.
Leave, leave the hearing open. We'll, we'll leave it open, but the, the motion would be to continue the public hearing to,
March 8th.
was a date suggested, then we need a second and a vote, but then we, we just bump it to then.
I'm open to a motion to continue the public hearing and leave it open till March 8th.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes, or it's continued
Yes.
till March 8th. Thank you, everyone. No new business, no old business, reports of commissioners and staff.
Oh, I got it. Whether it be on a new business or not.
One item, and this is just for Adam, for your train of thought, and for the commission to think about. I've been concerned about all these small units that the state's making us do, and the impact on the city.
Thanks, Chris.
And even for small apartment projects, and even on the one we just saw today, we require storage. There's no storage requirement whatsoever for these small units, and I'm gonna ask if we can do something about this, that we need to require that these places have storage for either a bicycle, a surfboard, Christmas decoration, they have nothing.
Golf clubs.
Whatsoever. And I think maybe we need to see, have staff consider somewhat of requiring that we have adequate storage to keep the neighborhood clean. Because we've got, and this is lawyer stuff here, they've precluded people with golf carts, they've precluded people with electric cars, even though they're thinking, well, if they have a car, they'll park in the street. They can't charge it, they're out of luck. And I think we need to, in the long term, consider it, talk about, about it with all the planners in, in the department, and see what they think. But I think we need to consider having a requirement for storage that's out of sight, enclosed, of an adequate size for bicycles, surfboards, gardening equipment. I mean, they've got nothing, they can build these things.
Are you talking about ADUs specifically?
No, just small units.
So define that less than twelve hundred feet?
It's, it's the ones that, the lot split units.
The lot split, yeah.
Those ones did have a storage component written into it.
Yes, there is a storage component.
How much? You know?
It's like fifteen square feet, I think?
I don't remember.
No, I thought, I thought. No, I thought, I thought just, you know, I don't know, but I can find that information. I don't know.
I think we need to consider that whenever anything's built, we've got to have some storage to protect the neighborhood.
Yeah, is every dwelling required to have storage?
No. Right now, it's a garage.
Yeah, it depends, it depends too. So it, it depends on, on what type of dwelling it is and has the state preempted the city's ability to impose local requirements. So for SB nine, we can impose objective development standards, and so that was why we had a little more flexibility there. But for ADUs, for instance, if, if someone qualifies for a garage conversion under state law, our, our hands are literally and figuratively tied where you have to issue the building permit.
Well, you can issue the building, but can't you say within that building, you need storage?
No, we cannot. It's a, it's completely preempted by the state. If they, if they meet the, if they provide the complete independent living facilities and it's fits within a scenario that state law says is, has to be ministerially approved with the building permit, it's very few boxes we can check and require. If we're, if we're outside of, you know, it really just depends on the type of application that comes into staff and what options state law gives the city. But to the extent that there are options, then yeah, we can, we can impose objective requirements that, that speak to storage. And I mean, things like square footage is very easy since math.
I'm just looking at staff to consider that and see if there's any advantage to requiring something like that, places where it's not done, because we do require them for apartments. Most cities have a specific thing for bicycles at apartments and whatnot, and I would just want to make sure we don't miss the boat on that if we have that opportunity.
Can I just piggyback super fast? I bet, you know, based on your, if he's saying, well, we can't require it, but I bet if staff, first of all, suggested it, probably a lot of people say, hey, that's a good idea, yeah, we'll make a closet over here or whatever. Plus, maybe if there was a closet that was accessed from the outside, it wouldn't count as a square footage against them. So maybe we could say, hey, you, you guys, you can have an extra, I don't know, whatever you think or whatever, you know, 40 square feet extra here, but it's going to be an outside storage unit. People probably say, cool, you know?
I like the idea of suggestions.
So, but especially if it didn't count against their square footage.
It's a process.
So it's just something to think about.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, state law is just really big on like, when you can and cannot hold up an application, but, you know, as Mal said earlier, kind of in the, the First Amendment context, I mean, there's certainly conversations that could be had, suggestions from staff, priorities that staff can convey to applicants, that's all, that's all on the table.
So Bart, would you like to agendize that on a future agenda to discuss it in more detail?
I'll, I'll wait till staff thinks about it for a while and they've got more heads to, reins to use in the department, just if you come up with something or think it's valuable.
But they did add something in the SB nine about that because they could.
Yeah, I can do a survey of, of our existing code, opportunities for improvement, and just report back on this at a future.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, I want, the item I want to bring up is related to the reins. And if you go down the beach trail from North Beach to Linda Lane and you look up on the bluff, there's quite a bit of erosion. And I, I don't know what the city's position on that is. So, you know, I've talked to you about this in the past, you know, right by Linda Lane, there's at least one home that's visibly lost ground under the, under the backyard. It's, the patio is like way out there. There's others where you can see, there's little landslides. So I have no idea where to go with it, other than I, my fear, I have a fear. My fear is we're on the six o'clock news and it's like, look at these homes going fallen down in San Clemente. And what does that say about our town? We don't care, people, whatever. I, I kind of feel like I would, that's a fear of mine. So I don't know where we go with it. I don't know if there's policy about that. I don't know if there's anything. I know the coastal commission is a big issue here, but do we have a policy about coastal bluff erosion where an existing home is impacted? That, just a question.
Yes, we do. I'll send you that information.
Okay.
But it's basically our, our land use plan of the, of our halfway, halfway completed local coastal program has a lot of land use policies and hazards policies related to bluff erosion.
Okay. I'll take a look at that and then have, talk further about it, I guess. My fear is just wanting to have the city be on the position of doing, being proactive and doing the right thing so that we avoid those situations.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is there anything from staff? We need to, staff waivers?
No, just staff waivers and the tentative future agenda are included in the packet, but other than that, I do not have any updates.
Then I move that we adjourn this to the next regular meeting of the planning commission to be held on Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers.
One second, huh?
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's his calendar. Finally found it. Okay, we don't have.
There's a lot to digest there.
Oh, Tum, I, I mean. I think the only reason city council really did it is to make it look like they were concerned.
I think we can next time, though.
I don't think it was really in their heart.
I like the data, find out where the bottleneck is and see what we can do with that.
Yeah, and it was done before. I'm not sure anything, I'm not sure they were all in.